Might have lost Jake.
All right, it looks like we have Zach on the line. Let's get this meeting started at nine thirty. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to give us an update?
Absolutely. Thank you guys for having me. And as we get started with the 2022 session here, second half of the biennium, the legislators have hit the ground running. There's kind of a slew of bills going on here. This week, some of them new, most of them old, kind of rehashes this stuff. I did send out all this weekend, kind of schedule for the week with bill numbers and some highlighted stuff you guys might want to pay attention to. But I'll just go through real quickly, some of the notes that I have and some of the concerns that I've heard a lot about. First of all, from the treasures, House Bill fourteen ten, that's the property tax deferment program. Defers the property taxes by a year mitigates the penalties. Treasurers are pretty, again, you know, up in arms about that one. It's not necessarily good for planning. And if people figure out that it's cheaper to defer your taxes than it is to pay them, that's not a good thing for the county. So there is some work being done on that one. We'd love to see it go away. WASAC's position on that will be the same as yesterday or yesterday, last year, which is, we don't want it. But if you're going to do it, please make some changes. So we'll watch that one closely. I think the final disposition of that one will probably be about the same. Hopefully it'll just go away. The other concern that I've heard a lot about is this WAC. It's two forty six dash one zero zero. There's a meeting tomorrow talking with the Department of Health. What they're talking about is there is, that's a statute that's in existence right now that says in the case of an emergency and medical pandemic, basically, is what they're trying to do with this is that they could inter people who, you know, are sick or won't take a vaccine or, you know, any number of things. The meeting is tomorrow to talk about it. We're here in both sides of the fence. This is going to be the end of the world. And then other people saying, it's really not that bad. We're just talking. So we'll watch it. There's definitely a lot of opposition to including COVID nineteen and that statute. And I just don't know what to tell you how that's going to come out, but we will be watching that hearing tomorrow. It's something to keep an eye on. There is a bill fifty five fourteen. This is a Benton County bill. What it does is it allows for the commissioners to meet outside of the county seat monthly, as opposed to only allowing a quarterly meeting outside of the county seat. It's specific for Benton County because they like to have their meetings in Kennewick where most of their people are. Most of the counties are basically saying, hey, we'll support you. It's nothing that really, a lot of the counties want to do, but it's more permissive. So that's a good thing. There is a interesting little micro trenching bill. I don't know that it would affect you guys too terribly much, but it's seventeen twenty two. That one specifically is centered around broadband access, installation of small cell nodes for, say, five G, four G service. This one would compel a county or a city to allow the installer to install something in a trench that's six inches wide and up to twelve inches deep in your right away. It exempts some, some things like state highways or state right of ways, you know, which is probably where in the rural areas where most of these nodes are going to be. So it's really interesting. Axel's working on that one with the association. They think they've got it to somewhere where it's really not going to be too terrible, but we're going to keep an eye on it. Another one that just dropped might be interesting for you guys. It's House Bill nineteen thirty three, which would allow for counties to, small counties, you got to qualify for it. But it would allow you to put a tax, an excise tax on cannabis producer and processors. The idea behind this is they would like to incentivize local jurisdictions, rural areas, to bring in producers and processors where there's a lack of industry. I don't know that it's a huge deal for you guys, but it's something to watch. It could be another revenue source. Twelve oh two is kind of one of those big group of the, the police reform or criminal justice reform bills. This one's on today at ten o'clock and judiciary. But what they're talking about with this is civil remedies, basically civil liability for police officers. We're having enough, enough issues keeping our cops, you know, in the rural areas in general. So it's something that we're not super fond of. I don't know that it'll go anywhere. It didn't go anywhere last year. And I would love to say that the legislators have learned something from the bills that they implemented last year. Think Long Term Care Act and other criminal justice reform stuff, police defunding, that just isn't working. But they seem to bring it back up. So that's, you know, we'll just kind of have to go with it and obviously oppose these things as they affect us negatively. In Senate egg this afternoon at one thirty, there's a work session that you might be interested in and probably quite a few of your constituents. It's talking about the cattle industry. Specifically, they're going over country of origin labeling and the brand inspection program, the pesticide commission, things like that, that obviously cattle producers and feeders are going to be really interested in. I don't know. There's, I wouldn't expect a lot of change coming out of that, but there's certainly going to be, you know, some, some interest that you might want to pay attention to. Climate issues, they're trying to incorporate climate into almost every bill they possibly can. One that they're looking at that you'd probably be interested in is fifty six twenty six. It's talking about incorporating climate resilience in water system plans. You know, that's, it's just another step that you'd have to take and it's pretty vague. So we're watching that one really closely. There is an interesting one, seventeen eighteen, which would ban the fur production. Now, the question, you know, it's not like anybody has mink farms or anything around here, but the question this raises is what about the, the cattle industry? Would that mean that you can't produce any leather out of the hides or any fur, anything? So we're looking into that one. We'll see kind of what that one looks like. I don't know that it's going to affect the cattle industry, but if it does, we're certainly going to watch it. So those are the, the real big ones that we've been watching. Is there anything so far that you guys are seeing or any, any issues that you want to look at, want us to pay attention to, comment on or anything like that that you see coming up?
Gentlemen, would you like to go first?
I don't have anything specific. You, you kind of covered everything and then your, your weekly emails. I've made my own comments on the record on some of these bills. Depending on where they go, we might comment from the board on the record.
Commissioner Soder.
Yeah, the only thing I would, yeah, I mean, we're, these are, there's nothing new here as far as we can kind of track these topics for a while. One thing I don't have the bill number, I think it was, it was just drawn yesterday, is one that has to do with a pill payment. It would be changing for renewable energy projects, which would be give a option for local legislative authority to negotiate a pill payment instead of traditional property tax. I'll give you the number because I don't, I don't have it. I was looking for it. It's in my notes back at my office.
That is House Bill nineteen twenty one.
Thank you.
Cool. Yeah, we, there was quite a bit of discussion about that pre-session. And yeah, so that is, I think, a really good issue to address. Obviously, we're seeing some kind of opposition from the people who own those assets. You know, and how they're taxed, because right now you guys are getting the short end of the sticks. So it's certainly something that obviously you guys want to support.
I think we've got more work to do on that, to flesh that out in terms of the valuations where it's setting, in essence, a cap on what that pill could be rather than a floor. And then when it's set for ten years, there's no CPI inflator or anything else. So when you look out ten years, some of these, it's, it might be a pretty good deal for the, the companies and not for the counties. So we've got more work to do on that one, I think.
Yeah. Well, and, and one of the questions that came up when we were running this by a lot of the other counties was, you know, specifically looking at how we've seen the pill program operated by the state. For example, they're at two thousand nine levels of payment, you know. So who's going to collect the tax? And then is that going to be something where, you know, the state's going to say, oh, well, yeah, we collected it, but we can't pay it all to you because of, you know, all these things. Who knows what reasons they'd make up? So that's something that was brought up by quite a few other county commissioners that I think we probably want to look at.
As for me, another one is Senate Bill five 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 eight, which is the by-state authority for the rebuilding of the Head River Bridge. If you guys would like to be in support of that, that would go a long ways. There's a hearing in Senate Transportation on Thursday at four on that. And we've got some very minor technical tweaks left to it.
Okay.
And then another one is Senate Bill five seven two seven, the Riparian Buffer Bill. Been watching this one and, and I think this one for, for pretty much all of our landowners next to any streams. This one, the way it's written is very, very scary. Have you guys looked into that?
We have looked into that. It has a companion. That's House Bill eighteen thirty eight. The governor has put a lot of emphasis on salmon recovery. That bill is in committee. It doesn't have a hearing scheduled yet. We'll watch those two because the fact that there are companion bills here on that one. We will figure out as soon as it gets a hearing and let you know.
Okay. And then the other one that's on my list is five six one three. And this is a, making a change to the legislation that allows local governments, counties to have anything to do with wildlife that are harassing or depperate, depredating on domestic animals and livestock.
Yes, that one has been referred to committee. It doesn't have a hearing yet. We can watch that one for you as well. Obviously, that's definitely a benefit, being able to do that.
Agreed.
So that's, we'll keep an eye on those ones and, and as they start coming up and around, we will come back around to it and let you know what we see. We might touch bases with some of the sponsors to see what the reality of them coming up for hearing is.
That would be great.
Okay. So with that, is there any other, any other bills, any other questions that you might be interested in?
Not for me right now, gentlemen.
No, sir. No, not for me either. There will be as we go forward.
We're just getting fired up now.
That's right. Just getting fired up.
A lot of getting fired up and get done and get out before they do too much damage.
Trying to keep my blood pressure down.
Yeah.
I've got one, one more, five, six, one, three. Do you have any, any updates on that?
Five, six, one, three. Let me see where they are on that one. I'm going to have to pull it up on the computer here real quick just to see. Oh, the five.
That's the wildlife bill, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the wildlife one. We're going to, it hasn't got, it's, it's in committee, hasn't got a hearing yet. We can touch bases with Vanda Wedge here and see where, what he thinks is going to happen with it.
Oh, got it.
There's a big push with that kind of outside of the legislature on fish and wildlife. For the governor to make appointments to open seats on the Fish and Wildlife Commission to get a few more PDA activists involved. So that's a side note, but I'm watching the wildlife as well.
Got it. We will certainly do that. All right. Well, it looks like we're at our end time here, so I can let you guys move on to the next one. Definitely appreciate the time and as always, call or email anytime. Be available, like I said, phone, email, text, whatever you need. So thank you very much. And we'll talk here in a couple of weeks and watch for the update.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good luck this session.
Oh, thank you. We need it.
Yeah, I agree.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. Is Aaron on the? No, Aaron's not on yet. Gentlemen, is there anything else you'd like to discuss since we got fifteen minutes before the Board of Health discussion?
Nothing super exciting. I did do the community meeting in Dallasport last night for the property transaction for the community center. Fifteen people or so online, a couple of comments that they didn't know what it was about. So they were just tuning in to hear what it was about. The rest of the comments were in favor of giving the land back to the county. It sounds like the board is going to act on that Wednesday to finalize that deal and give that land back to the county.
Dave, would you like to give an update of your meeting yesterday on the House Bill?
Nineteen twenty one?
Yeah.
Yes, so I did meet virtually, so it's myself with some members of solar industry, pretty specifically the Cypress Creek and their industry lobbyist Jim Johnson over the, they were wanting to get some input from us as far as on the language of this House Bill nineteen twenty one, which would be an option for, it would give that option for the local legislative authority to negotiate the pill with a maximum. Mr. Henderson's correct. There's a, it's got a cap for based on a per megawatt of the nameplate of the project, the project for negotiated for a ten year period. Ten even payments over ten years. The project would not go on to the tax rolls. It would be, there would be the standard or their part of this legislation is to establish or to look at the depreciation schedule specific to these projects. Modify their, the industry is arguing that depreciation schedule is tied to their projects. That it was, at least the take I got, it's like wind is different. Again, this would be optional. I would say the biggest sticking point right now is that cap. Like I'm, I'm supportive of having the option to use a pill instead of the tax roll because if you don't have that appreciation, it's bad. You know, it's the tax shift that's going on when those big projects go on the tax rolls. But the biggest issue I have is with what is, what's that number? What should that number be? So that it's fair or it's not a tax break to the industry. It's they're, they're basically paying the same amount of taxes as they normally would in a current system. It's just an even payment for ten years, which is way better for the jurisdiction that the system. It looks based on, they're, they're arguing that their values are not accurate to what they should be. So their calculations, which I, I will share some of my research I did later, it's in my office, in my notes, as far as the cost to construct and what they're going to bring in places, which were not exactly consistent with what they said. Where they, because the number that they came up with is forty five hundred dollars per minute of light are currently our wind projects. I had done the figures on what we currently, because we don't have any solar projects on the tax rolls to, to, you know, verify against, but it is our current wind projects are, they're all have been on the rolls for a while. So there is some, they're depreciated. They average between five and seven thousand dollars per minute of light is what they're actually paying.
So they're saying their cost to build is forty five hundred dollars per minute of light.
No, that they would pay taxes of forty five hundred dollars per minute of light. Rather than bond. There, my, if you use the current tax system, again, I'm not the assessor. Later, I just took the value of construction, reduced the, the numbers that they're giving us. So a hundred and sixty megawatt project that they had just applied for in Oregon is two hundred and twelve million dollars. What's the cost of construction? Less their thirty percent tax credit they want. So it would go on the tax rolls. It's about a dollar or about a billion dollars of megawatt, which is about consistent with what they told us. Well, if you take that value from our tax system, it generates about eight thousand dollars per megawatt in the first year. And then it goes, it drops as it depreciates. So eight thousand to forty five hundred is, there's quite a delta there between. So that's, I think, their argument is it all gets done. It shouldn't be placed at the, it shouldn't be generating eight thousand. It really should be generating the average of ten years, generate about forty five hundred dollars per megawatt.
Why did?
But that's their position, not necessarily mine.
Why did, why did we, you're the ten year
It could be, it's just capped. It's not, it could be renegotiated after ten years. So it would set it for ten years. And I see the perspective is that you would look at what is, so you know, in a perfect world, the ten years would be the average of what they would normally pay over that ten year period. Even though over ten years, the second ten year period would be the average of what they would normally, which would be lower as they're depreciating. And then you could, their but they did, like they can't opt out when you sign the contract in the second, in this legislation, after the initial ten year period, they can opt out and just go into the regular tax system and start paying it if. So that would be the negotiation because they would be looking at, because they're in year eleven through year twenty, their values would have been depreciated in the normal system. They would be paying less than forty five hundred dollars per megawatt. So they would obviously want some. So maybe it's three thousand dollars for a megawatt in the second ten year set. So I think they were looking at it. I agree. It's that you wanted it a big enough chunk where you have certainty about what the benefit.
But I'm, I'm just thinking if when you renegotiate from the second section of that and the third section of that, you're still going to have a lower tax number. But again, you wouldn't have the tax shift. This is never, the tax was never.
Gets rid of that. Which I don't think people, like, I don't even think the industry or other jurisdictions or other counties, as far as their assessors and stuff, understand the how detrimental that is for that, that shift that goes on. Yeah, you know, you have projects that are depreciating eight half percent per year, which that's not really accurate either because based on my figures, it's about five and a half percent is the effective depreciation because the whole project is not depreciating. There's components of it. The real estate is not. There's other pieces of it that are not on the depreciation schedule. And so you've got the, you know, in the case of wind, the turbines are depreciating eight half percent, but they're not a hundred percent of the total value. And so the effective, at least based on our data going back ten years, but it does average about five and a half percent per year. So that five and a half percent is shifting to the other taxpayers. That's a real issue. And I think local government should have the option to, or not, if they want. They don't think it's a big deal, or if it's not a real big percentage of their overall tax base. It's not a big deal. In our case, it can be, or in certain districts too. You know, for us, it's about a third, thirty percent of our, of our tax rolls are depreciating. That's a big deal. If you're a big, or maybe only have one or two projects that are only, like, those projects are only five percent of your tax base. Who cares?
They don't have fifty megawatts.
So we got fifty megawatts. Who cares? It doesn't really matter. But if you're, as these projects are located in rural counties in, in Eastern Washington, they tend to be big capital projects that have an oversized effect on the overall tax goals. We want to have this tool. Look at it. It's, it's not mandatory. It's a discretion of the government. I, I think, I would like to have what, what that tool actually is a being is going to have. The devil's in the details as far as, what's that number?
Well, to me is, yeah. Campaigning on last year, it needs fixed one way or the other, whether that's a legislative fix with the assessor, how she does business. Or whether we can come up with tools to or way, how would this, when I talked to Cypress Creek earlier in the year, and we talked about this, is this something that was proposed to the legislature by the industry?
Mostly, I mean, mostly. There's been, there's been age counties that are interested in this. Because I don't think they, people have the projects or know it was a problem. So hopefully we can get it in front of it.
So I, I'd say there's, there's also the other way that it's been done, and that's the way Idaho does it. And I think they currently charge three and a half percent of gross sales. Over the time, if we're expecting electricity prices to go up, that might be one option that would then still pull it off. So we wouldn't have that tax shift. And then it could be more fair over time. Because what I don't like is, is that after ten years, these things have depreciated down to whatever their sunk value is. It's twenty nine to thirty something percent. And then there's, there's really no reason for the company to enter into another pill because it's going to be in their favor to just pay the taxes on that sunk value. It's going to be cheaper no matter what. I see a lot of issues with this potentially, the way we're designing it by putting a floor or a cap rather than a floor. It doesn't give us the ability for a lot of room for negotiation with these larger companies. And it seems like it's putting us in the second, second tier of a role. I don't know. I think it'd be good for us three to have a longer conversation about it, maybe this afternoon.
I agree. Because to me, it's that ten year thing too, because, you know, they're going to last thirty years. And, and they're going to be able to pay this down every ten years to where they're pretty much paying nothing. And then they're going to come to us and say, well, yeah, but the values depreciated. It's not worth nothing. But then when we do a decommissioning plan, they're going to tell you that it's, the panels are still with eighty five percent of their value. So they're going to want eighty five percent scrap value. Well, we're going to need to take into their numbers this into the decommissioning plan too. The numbers are the numbers. They can't have a whole place. But yes, longer conversation. It's almost kind of a boxer.
That is a good point. It is now ten o'clock. We're going to move into our discussion on the Board of Health. And where we left off. I guess I'll start, um, we've got changes that are gonna be coming. Um, they're still currently working on the WAC up, update as I understand it. The RCW has been updated, um, and as I read the RCW, there's a lot of things in there that seem to contradict themselves. Um, I don't know if you guys have had that same feeling.
Yep.
And so I think, you know, before we go about appointing the next person to the Board of Health, I think it'd be a good idea to, to each of us say, kind of where we feel this next Board of Health, we see it going, how many people do we, do we feel we're gonna have on it? And what goals and objectives we have. Um, and if, Aaron, if there's anything you'd like to say before we start the discussion, I'd be happy to entertain it. Come on up and make sure you yell.
I'll really end the own. Uh, I'll just wait, like I have, like I found it confusing as well, like, I'm not sure how to proceed, so I, I think it'll be interesting to see what your recommendations are, because I'm, and, and my own lack of knowledge, but I'm struggling with RCW is telling me one thing, and then there's proposed WAC that doesn't matter, and how we're gonna address that. So it's just a matter of having a discussion today to kind of see where we're at, have it prepped to vote it in at the last second, give you a ready answer like first, so that we don't have to change it if we, I think, I don't know. But the ready answer is, but I, I definitely have comments, but I, I think I should wait till the end probably.
Very wise.
Well, I'm not sure, or, you know, I kind of have my own personal ideas, but I'm not, I don't know what the board is, um, thinking or moving towards, and I I think it would help me to frame my comments to understand what her opinions are.
Yeah.
Uh, well, as you probably know, I've done all the meetings. I consider myself well educated on this topic. Granted, nobody knows everything because it is written in, uh, ancient Greek or something, and it's hard to understand. But, uh, and everybody's got a different interpretation of it. But for the most part, you have to have an equal number of regular people as you do elects. So if we're going to keep with just these three electives, that would mean that we would be three regular, of which one of those regular has to be a tribal appointee. Uh, that's a given, that name is given to us by the tribal liaison. So that's one we don't have to worry about until July, and they will give us that information. So in reality, we're only dealing with two seats, just like the two seats we have now. The difference lies is there's three categories that you have to collect those two people from. If they have, there's three categories, and they have to be from different categories, they can't be from the same category. Uh, so one category would be doctors, nurses, dentists, pharmacists, uh, literally working the healthcare field. Uh, one would be liaison to the healthcare field, women, infant, child support, nutrition programs, that type of thing. And then the third one is community stakeholders. Essentially, people from the business community, active retired, armed services. Uh, or anybody that's had a dealing with public health, which got under the COVID era, I'm pretty sure everybody in the world has qualifies for option number three. Uh, option number two is a little more harder for me to grasp, so in my opinion, you need one person from the medical field, which is category one, and one person from category three, which is all others. Um, and I would appoint accordingly. So that we don't have to change again come July first. But then again, whoever we appoint now, I would only appoint them until July first, so that we can have all of our Board of Health appointments concurrent on the same date of the year, every year. I've already made two motions, um, to have an appointment for Dr. John Brumeister. And he's a local from this side of the county, cause I believe of the two appointments, we're gonna get it made, since we don't make the tribal appointment. I think we need to have a cross representation of the entire county, as opposed to both individuals being on the district one side of the county, which is what we have now. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Commissioner Satter, your thoughts?
Um, I would concur with the assessment as far as the read of the RCW. I have us. I won't get into the actual individual appointments. But yeah, my read of it is that we're gonna have, uh, three Board of Commissioners and then the other three, one of which will be a tribal member, I'm a little, it doesn't really specify in there. You know, that's up to them as far as who the appointment is, that they don't have, it doesn't have to be from one of those three categories, so we could end up with somebody that's doubled up in a category, because their appointment may check that box, but we don't have any control over that. That's just a, a comment, and so, yeah, our two remaining ones, uh, if we go in that system, have to come from those three categories. Public health, healthcare facility, basically providers, providers, consumers of public health, and then stakeholders, which are the, the three different categories. I would say I'm, I'm, I don't, as far as the logistics of having everybody's terms expire, so I'm easily, I don't agree with, I think that's that our, most boards and commissions have staggered terms for a reason, so they have some continuity, some institutional college. So I wouldn't favor that, I would favor. Um, I don't know, I think, I think during this legislative session, I hope there is a clarification of some of this stuff during the short session. And so I, I don't know that we need to necessarily take, and you know, this new makeup in these categories, we don't actually have to do it until July first. And so I don't know if I'm in a, I guess I would ask as far as, cause right now, we actually only have four members on the Board of Health. Because the fifth previous one, I believe the term expired December thirty first, and so we have, we have an open vacancy now under our current makeup of the board. Uh, I guess I would be curious from, uh, from the Health Director's perspective, how handicap are we, Board of Health operating with all the four members for a short period of time? Versus just filling that position, or do we fill a position with someone that we think qualifies for what's coming as it's configured now, not how it may be modified during the short session? But I, um, as I said, I, I concur with my, my read of the RCW is, is, is exactly the same as.
Well, and I guess I'll clarify, my appointments all being at the same time, the reason why whoever does, I only wanted to do it for six months. Was because that way if you needed to change it, because of new updates legislative, you wouldn't have to pull somebody in the middle of their term to make the fix that we made in that meeting. So let's say for each, today we appoint you John Brumeister, who's a medical professional. Uh, that would give us two medical professionals, because I believe Paul Moyer is as well, we are now not currently as sits on July first. And one of those two would need to leave and be replaced by somebody else. So it would still, it wasn't as much of a time, July first ending date. To keep everybody on the same term, it was more of a, so we had a, really fix whatever we did for six months. Then either Moyer would need to be replaced with Citizen at Large, or Brumeister would need to be replaced with Citizen at Large.
Commissioner Satter, do you believe there's gonna be legislative change this, this go around? Cause we haven't seen anything introduced, have we?
I'll spell eleven fifty two.
And what, what, what all is eleven fifty two looking like?
So it just talks about how the local Board of Health membership is made, and how the individuals are appointed, and I, it's still in draft, the form version I have is still in draft. Um, there are some, it is in some alignment with the current RCW, but that was my concern, is if they're not a hundred percent on board, so if you haven't viewed the two, then I want to do that before we can maybe finalize the plan of what we're gonna do. Um, because this could potentially, and I, I see the, I just don't really know how the WACs and RCWs end up, who gets, you know, who's on first with that, but this could potentially change the final plan.
And I would agree, but everything can change the final plan, because by the Indian appointee, which is the American Indian Health Commission, they believe that the RCW is written, that we have to have one tribal appointment from every tribe, every landowner, every needed rights holder. Got it, could be five or six different tribal members, so they're gonna be trying to push the legislature for that as well. So WAC's opinion is they don't really know that they wanna go in and have a legislative change, because that might not work in our favor. So whatever we do, it might only be for six months.
And they are currently in rulemaking right now, so, I mean, it's weird that the legislature would be looking to change it before the rulemaking is through, to see if legislature likes it anyways.
Right, right, I, I actually don't have a lot of, I don't think there would be a legislative change to our, I don't think the RCW would change. I think this was too, I think it's baked in, it was, it was heavily negotiated last year. Um, I don't think the, the players have really changed, and so I think what we're gonna see is more clarification during the ruling process. But as Aaron said, sometimes you end up with WACs that seem inconsistent to apply the RCW, even though that shouldn't even be possible. Uh, considering the RCW is the, is the governing law, this is supposed to implement the law, but if the, if the WAC is implementing something that's inconsistent with the law, you shouldn't be able to make that rule, but we all know that that does happen.
I guess, so, so my thought though, is, is if we're going to, if, if there's three positions, or three different sections plus the tribal, uh, one of our other options is we could add a city or two cities to, um, the total. And then if we added one city, then we could have our tribal representative, and then one from each of the three categories, and then uh, everything would be hunky dory, and so that would be eight people total. And I don't really mind that if the Board of Health has an even number, because it's not a decision making, uh, group. It's more of a policy advisory group for the most part.
It has to be equal, we have to equal representation.
Right.
Right, so if you added two city mayors, you would have to put in that, uh, five elect. So, but either way, regardless of that, I would be opposed to anything, uh, adding more electives. When you do, I think you end up in a scenario like Yakima County has found itself in, where the Board of Commissioners really don't have a whole lot of oversight of the Board of Health. If they tend to bicker and squabble and fight, and I'm trying to, uh, make sure that doesn't happen, so. If, if it's the board's decision to add more electives to the Board of Health, I would be opposed to that.
Commissioner Satter, how do you feel?
I, I think I have to be convinced of that, I'm not, I'm not sure what we get, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I don't know that it doesn't work the way we're doing it now, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of keeping our changes to the minimum that's required to implement the RCW as it exists today. Which is just, you know, aligning our appointments to that we would have with, uh, those categories and the, and, you know, inviting the tribal, I think it was like the health authority, their, however it's referred to in here, to appoint someone for that sixth seat. Go from there. I do think there needs to be some geographic parity between, you know, I think they should be, we should not have, uh, you know, our two citizen, uh, appointees from the same area, I think you need to have diversity across the county, so there should be an east and a west, I'm not saying that necessarily has to be Goldendale or anything, but, but not, you know, both from salmon, and it's, and I would say it's, it's unfortunate that, cause I think our current or formerly current, I've done a great job, I think they've been really good Board of Health members, uh, from my perspective, I don't think they have not served well. Just because they happen to both have lived, uh, they're both in the West End. But that's not, they're disqualified, but I think we have other qualified people to spread that out a little bit.
Mr. Christopher?
Um, yeah, it's just to me, if that's where we're going, we need to decide. With the open appointment, number one, do we fill the open appointment, or do we just leave it open until July? If we fill it, do we fill it with another public health person, or sorry, a healthcare professional? Which then we'd have to make another change come July, or do we fill it with the citizen representative, and then we may not have to make a change come July? If you fill it with a, and then you also have to decide whether you're separating uh, white salmon from Dallasport, Goldendale, getting another representative from this side of the county somewhere. Uh, it's my understanding, looking at the current applications for members of the Board of Health. There's Sue Paddock, who is a public health person, or a healthcare professional. There's Sherry Medina, who's also a healthcare professional, and there's Dr. Brumeister, who's also a healthcare professional. The only person that would follow that the citizen category is Pete Leo.
Mr. Commissioner, I believe we do have a. No, it's not a new one, but it's, I believe is a teacher in this instance.
Probably. So that doesn't give you, it's, it's a regular citizen, yes, but it does give you the separation of of a wider diversity of citizen involved. Forgot about this point, or sorry.
My personal feeling is knowing that there's gonna be changes coming either through the WAC or through legislation. Um, and knowing that having one less person on the Board of Health for a month or two while they work these things out, um, to leave an open position, so we don't have to make more changes in the future would be my preference.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Satter?
Um, yeah, I would, I, I, I don't feel compelled to do anything to take action. I don't know, I guess I would, I would, I would withhold my judgment on that until I hear from the the Health Director as far as if there is, I mean, we have a pretty well set agenda as far as, you know, as far as in the role of the Board of Health, as far as the kind of direction that we're in, I don't see, you know, earth shaking decisions that have to be, um, consulted on as far as in the next month or two. Uh, likely, yeah, so I, I agree, I, I would be supportive, let's just take our time and see, cause I think the clouds will clear, hopefully a little bit. We can get a sense of where they are, and then, cause we, the way it is now, we are going to have to do something by July first, cause that's when uh, RCW takes effect, we'll have to be in compliance with that, but I, I would be fine with just leaving it open for the time. We'll have to be in compliance there. But I, I would be fine with just leaving it open for the time. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's going to hurt us for this month.
Commissioner Christopher, are you okay with that?
I guess I, I'm kind of torn on that. Because I think if a position's open and there are people that want it. Even if it be temporary for six months, we should allow the citizens to represent their government. I'm, I'm kind of torn because we say there's, you know, kind of nothing pressing and we can kind of get by for two months. And while that's true, uh, in some regard, we still are in the middle of COVID. And I think people should be able to have a voice and represent their government. But again, as I've, I've made two motions to fill the seat that have been seconded. I can be the odd man out on this one as well.
Yes, Aaron.
Um, so a couple of things, um, just like historical context. Typically, the Board of Health appointee has been the director recommending to the Board of Commissioners. He certainly would want to um, have a role in, in who, who the appointee is with our current Board of Health. I work with them all the time. They have been invaluable support to me through COVID. I just can't tell you the amount of time they've taken from calls and they've helped support. They've both over a hundred hours of volunteer service each. They're showing up at our clinics every week. They are absolutely the picture of public health and that's who I want to recruit to the Board. They both understand the changes that are going to come. They both understand that they may not be in the seat at the end of the day. But are committed to making sure that the right people do get in those seats as am I. It's, it's, and, and public health is what I do and I, it's important to me that this county, I mean, you not all agree about what that looks like in this county. But I definitely am invested in being right in for everyone and making sure that there is diversity and inclusion in the Board. Um, and for the people that are represented. I know it's frustrating that two people are put on that bench, but uh, it has not been attractive to be on the Board of Health for a long time. We didn't have people that cared. We didn't have people that stood up. So um, this is a different time and we're excited that we have people that are interested. But I think how we select those people and then making sure that they're representing the diversity of this community in the Board. So um, I think uh, you know, the WAC actually talks about how the Board of Health. They recommend that the Board of Health actually give interviews for the applicants before making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And while that is still in draft, we're maybe to pass the Commissioners consider doing that so that there's just um, there's more opportunity to ask for why they want to be on the Board of Health and understanding what their why is and how they're, how they're planning to serve our community. I think that's going to be really important for us. So, and then lastly, uh, you know, we don't have to make a decision until July. I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we consider reinstating Sue for a term of six months. Um, she's been on the Board of Health for four years. She understands that she's going to have to transition out. And I think that she'll be a really valuable asset to help the incoming people do that transition to handoff. Um, and, and, uh, and help the, and helping organizations for what the pool will be out of the Board in the coming future. Um, she's, she worked at the Health Department in the nineties. She's been in this county for a long, for a long time. Um, and, and all of the same, they both have a lot of both experience in public health in this county. They know what diversity and inclusion looks like. And I think their opinions moving forward and they want the Board and how that's going to change are going to be invaluable.
Thank you, Director Quinn. Um, do we have any further direction um, uh, that we'd like to go with this? Gentlemen?
I, I don't think so at this time.
Okay. All right. Sorry, I can't see anything. Someone raised their hand on my screen.
Hi, Commissioner Anderson. Hi, it's Vern Harple. If I could just, one quick comment?
Vern, this is not a, a public hearing or a public meeting. Um, I would love to have you give me your comment um, offline if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we won't be making any decisions right now. So send me an email or give me a call later today or I can reach out to you.
I was hoping you'd put it out for public comment to all the citizens of Click-Attack County.
There is one o'clock today. Um, for public comment, you can also give your comment at that.
Okay.
Thank you, Vern. All right. Thank you, Director Quinn. Uh, it is ten twenty-five. I guess let me know when Gordy and Jeff show up.
If you haven't heard about it, then I guess that's a good thing.
Good thing.
We have a question.
Uh, was that what that is?
Yes.
Yes.
Somebody thought I was dead.
Gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
Okay. We have a couple items on your consent agenda. The first one is a resolution matter reviewing our twenty twenty-one equipment rates. And so we're letting those ride or we let them ride after reviewing them in twenty twenty-one. Our plan is to have new equipment rates out um, in March of this year. That was the effective at the first of the year. So we'll just hold off on entering equipment costs until we get those rates in place and then we charge them. So that's the plan this year. Item number two is a resolution to reauthorize investments uh, of the Public Works Funds. I, it's required every year to do this. So Pam, who's the Deputy Director for Finance and Administration in our department and myself. So we have um, money that we feel we can invest and will cause a cash flow problem, then we'll invest it. Uh, item number three is a concurrence to award a small works contract between Pacific Northwest Environmental and the county for asbestos, asbestos removal chambers and HR in that courthouse. I don't facilitate us moving forward with improvements there. Your office is a chamber of the Item number four is a concurrence to award a small works contract between Coburn Electric, and this is for our on-call electrical contractor for this year. They were below um, on the construction side, everything is shut down. Officially suspended work on Roosevelt Great Road project and the remaining work locked away till the snow is gone. So they can have some group to install sites and guide posts. And it's the same with the grant, but the site and guide posts, you just can't. You can't put the sites in very effectively, but verma stone will lock on when the signs go. So um, we'll have good weather again and they'll get back out there. On the design side, porti-rope's a big thing. So it's still planned up, hopefully, this on the twenty-fifth. And we'll probably have an agenda out
Yeah.
Before too long. We're answering questions right now. There's four leaders signed up now. And then Click-Attack Path, still working on the design of that project and basically permitting uh, our geological review. And then our parking lot work. Might as well talk about the parking lot. So we, we talked about having a setup of time to review the need for parking around the courthouse and the annex building and Annex One. And uh, so next week.
Is that where we are now? Or no, nevermind. Sorry. I thought we were calling this was that.
No, it's, it's, yeah. So Annex, Annex One, uh, we've talked about it. Is, there's a need for parking there. Uh, what's the need and what are other options? So next week, if uh, the afternoon, we talked about scheduling a time in the afternoon, not our regular ten o'clock or ten thirty update. Um, to have maybe a half hour to present the need and options and costs and 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 whenever you guys want to schedule it. Would Thursday be better?
Doesn't matter to me. I just don't know how forward it is.
It's already on the schedule for Tuesday by the
All right. That's good.
All right. Problem solved. But a half hour seemed like the about the right amount of time to do this. If it feels like you need more, I think my presentation won't last much more than about ten or fifteen minutes and then that leaves.
What time did you have that on the
I'd have to go back and look. I believe it's
I'm just thinking if we put it close to the citizen comment period, at least those citizens that are interested might still be there here.
Right. I will move that up as close as I can.
Good.
Thank you. Okay. Um, we still have all of our on-call RFPs out there being advertised. And uh, we'll go up and select On maintenance side, the guys were busy last week. Whether it was here around the buildings and our facilities or out on the roads. We were still kind of cleaning up from that. West side, they are cleaning up, still cleaning up trees and branches that fell down during last week's event at the end of the week. And then they're widening roads and just responding to their weather prints this week. It shouldn't be much as a scheduled request, so I think that's fine. On Golden Dale East, uh, we're widening roads as well. Cold mixed patchy at the time when we start to develop potholes. So there's enough work to keep those guys busy as well on the side. Uh, let's see, work continues on this building. All the punch list items and unfinished work. So according to last week, we created a punch list for the final tour. Furniture, guest chairs arrived this week and the remaining furniture will trickle in through the S and A. You know, you never know if those dates will hold or get pushed out. So blinds, we're still waiting on a scheduled date. I think our contractors having trouble with their sub, getting them out here to install the proper blinds that we actually specified. HVAC units, uh, the balancing work is complete. They also discovered some of the jackdocks online. And so they're going to have to go back and replace those pieces. And then they also are looking at some of the units of dialing back the speed on the fan coils and to quiet them down. So that's kind of what they're working on for
Worry about that. It's a way to quiet them is to not put air in the system. But it gets hot. You might have to get air into your system.
Yeah, they, they have to still supply enough air. And that's, that's the challenge for them is to be able to do that and get it quiet enough. Some of them, whether that's possible, I'm the one that's out here at the entryway or not. Find out. But they still have to, the requirement for providing enough air in certain locations.
So are we going to have to pay for them to come in there and make these adjustments and changes? Or is that part of the bid?
And they have to, they have to perform if it's, you know, I, I, I don't know what the solution a hundred percent is. These are the things that they're going to try and uh, they shouldn't cost us anything. Some of the things should have been done, like the line ducting should have been installed properly. Dialing back the speeds they have to, I mean, they can't, they can't have something that's almost seventy dB. Sound. It, it's not, it's, it's not acceptable. We won't pay for that kind of stuff. But I, like I said, I don't know if these simple fixes will solve the problem or not. And then we'll have to go from there is uh, what the solution is.
I mean, it's kind of the same issue that we're having with the, the audio visual stuff is that, yeah, sure, it blows air, but it definitely doesn't meet specs, anybody's standards. But did we, we didn't, you know, specify the standards when we wrote it, right? It didn't say it had to be under seventy DBs.
Well, the, the uh, and there's requirements out there, guidelines for what kind of sound levels you should have. I think about fifty to fifty-five dB is kind of the office environment noise level.
Uh.
That's, that's what we have here and that's what we would expect.
Okay.
In the end. So
Just so long as we're not, we're not the ones paying to, to get it down there when we didn't design it. Some engineer did somewhere.
Right.
And I assume we still have something, like we have a paper. So we have retained, I mean, that's part of the reason we have retained agents to sell. Keeps everybody at the table because uh, if you have disputes over, there's still this money sitting over here that we're not releasing until
Right.
Are all happy. And then I think it's unreasonable for us to be happy that, you know, if it's seventy, which, I mean, it is, it's, it's unworkable.
Yeah.
Whether it was in the design specs or not, if you can't use, if it's, you can't use an office because it's so loud, you can't even talk on the phone. There's a difference between that and it's like, well, it's a little noisy, but it's, it's workable. That gets into the, well, that's, it's subjective. My office is not subjective. I can't, it's, I can't talk on the phone because nobody can hear me. Because it's like, where are you? Are you at the airport? Yeah, you don't want that one. You get lots of fresh air, but uh, yeah, it's, yeah. Everybody always thinks I'm calling the airport runway. You know, yep, I'm just getting on a plane, right? The taxiway. I think we'll, we'll get it figured out. Yeah. They've, they've been a good contractor and generally people want things to, they don't want it to be difficult because, you know, people talk to each other and you're like, yeah, we have this problem. We have this design problem, but we got it figured out. That, that's actually going to be a positive thing. Because there's always going to be little issues then. And that, that really kind of goes to the strength of the, what kind of firm it is if you're able to work those things out. If everything's wonderful, then we'll never know as far as how it was solved or how that works. So I, I, I think we'll, we'll get through it.
We will. Um, let's see, still working on and waiting for materials for the work in HR and weed. We were able to get almost all the panic buttons reinstalled over here in the departments except for WSU and Economic Development. So two more to go. So uh, working through those changeovers and still working on our parking expansion. Let's see courthouse entry, uh, hoping we can finish that up, get the doors open here. Maybe this week depending on weather.
Thank you, we, the
Yeah. Um, let's see, HVAC units, no change. Still planning to install those new, new equipment in my new seven and courthouse. Our radio, radio, uh, we're starting design. We actually got the survey for the site. We're going to get the whole road of the site. So the consultant is starting the design that we're executing. Get the total out there.
Jeff, do we have um, any cellular companies or anyone else that's, that's interested? Jeff, do we have any cellular companies or anyone else that's, that's interested in partnering with us on this tower?
Not that I've heard of yet, Jake, I'm gonna, I'm. When I talk to P U B again, I'm gonna ask, I have a, I have another meeting with that forward sewer plant. But I'll ask them what their opinion is. Because I've heard that they have talked about. They were gonna be at Redtail, but I don't know about Saints. But as far as cell towers, I don't know. Cell tower provider would probably be better off going to the Wash Dot site because it's up. On top of the pass and they can get over the valley. Our site is intentionally not there because we didn't want. The feedback from the valley. We picked up all that static, so ours is on this side. The pass, so. I don't know, I haven't heard anything that. We're just down, just up the hill from US cell too, so.
Right. I couldn't remember if there's an AT&T tower up there or not.
I know there was talk, I don't know if they ever built.
Okay, continue on.
All right, so snow removal last week, there were some calls that came in and. And we have new people, so they. They're learning as well, but. We have a snow. Turnaround, school bus turnaround that we plow out at the Llinwood Highway and one forty-two. So there's, if you're familiar with, there's like the old commercial building that was built and it's been. Finished for at least fifteen years. And so we plow outside, so I apologize Jake, I don't think we. Sent you copies of the photos, but you can. If you look at it, you can see we plow out into their parking area. For the school bus to turn around. And there were complaints that we were plowing somebody's. Property and around the business, so you can kind of see we. There's a place where we plowed and all their vehicles and up to the building, it's, it's still got all the snow there. So we plow out for the school bus to turn around and that's it. So. Dave, I know that Lee got a call, we got a call. Just wanted to follow up.
We have others, we have other places throughout the camp.
Yeah, or whether there are turnarounds or schools. That's just part of what we do. But sometimes people get the wrong idea. So just wanted to follow up.
Give you. Sometimes.
Well, let's see, so Fish and Wildlife has requested use of a portion of the fairgrounds to land a helicopter. And they need to plug in. Some equipment and then store. Some nets that they have that they're going to use to capture deer and do some study next week. So they're gonna be renting some of our facility at the fairgrounds to do that. So this one. What's that?
Yeah.
And then I also have a request. The. At one of our road construction inspectors turned in notice that they will be. Leaving employment in the county on the second of February. And we'd like to replace them. So at this position, most years, at least fifty percent of their salary is reimbursable by grant funds. And we really have to have somebody out there. If we're taking grants, federal and state grants. To meet the requirements for documentation and auditing Wash Dot and the state auditor. So there's a lot to manage for documentation. But we'd like to ask permission to refill that position.
I gave you a thumbs up, sorry, I was trying to hit the unmute button.
Thank you. And that's it for the list this week.
Have we had any interest in Courtney Road yet? How many people been picking up packets?
There's four contractors that are signed up. There, it's likely there's others, we've talked to others. They don't, it's not required that they sign up on Builders Exchange to bid. And sometimes they don't want others to know that they're gonna bid. Another strategy, so.
Okay, Commissioner Satter.
You, you mentioned this is a possibility of an addendum, is that something you can share why?
Just minor items that the contractors are asking.
So the addendum would just verify that they. They had the. Kind of covers those.
Right.
Things that people are asking questions about, so the kids say, oh, I didn't know, yes.
Right. You do question stuff and then that clarifies that, but it's. Pretty common to have those on a job of this size.
I mean, I've seen them, I mean, we've had, you know. Two and three addendums sometimes. Usually I don't like to see that because then it's, like I can recall, we've had a. Where someone fully, you know, they acknowledged, but they missed one of them. And it's like, oh, it's a non-responsive.
Yeah.
Yes. So. Okay, I just want to make sure there wasn't some. Issue that we were, I don't, you know, that we have discovered that we have to add.
And that's, that's one of the risks of not signing up on the Builders Exchange. Those people that sign up get notified automatically that there's an addendum.
Yes.
The other bidders that don't sign up. They have to keep looking.
Yeah.
See, you have to see if something changed or. And that's the risk they're willing to take.
Yeah.
Commissioner Christopher, any questions?
Um, yeah, back to Courtney Road questions and snow questions. How does that work on Courtney Road? I was reading a Facebook post of some chick that's halfway up there. Yeah, probably bad word, but anyway. Wanted to write out, get to the grocery store. Did we? Pay for this thing, are we gonna have to put guardrails on all those little advancements where you could go flying in the snow and ice? How's that gonna work for our plow, our graders, our sanders? Are we gonna actually try to keep up on this thing? But it's got six inches of snow on it, it's gonna be possible?
Yeah, it's a, it's a collector, we have guardrail on it currently and we'll be upgrading a lot of it. And the new section will be adding more where it's required and warranted. And then we'll be required to maintain it just like any other collector, the pave collector, which is a higher, higher level of. payments.
What about, what about, I mean, so yes, we are planning on sanding it and graveling it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Snow piles out here, who's in charge of those? I'm assuming like this parking lot we are.
Yeah, all of our lots we are responsible for.
What about, let's see, Red Street, since that's a city street. What apartment inside of it? The piles there, is that us or is that city?
We have piles there, I'm not sure where the city, I haven't looked at where they went through their. Their material, I know they came back this morning early and cleaned up Port Street. And I think it's kind of a slow process for them, but typically. Even on Ford in past years, they just windrow it, it's a big pile there for. And we lose that parallel part, part of it throughout the year.
What are our plans out here? Pile removal to give us back our parking card, let it help?
I think we were just kind of taking a breath before we do something more, but yeah, in the past, we act, we have removed that. As we have staffed and equipment to do that.
Same idea, we're on the party that we're here. I think we still have issues with county employees, park. Four spots that aren't handicapped here. And we said save for the public. And parking with their government vehicles at first with it. I don't know how we remedy that situation from here other than send another warning email.
Yeah, we could, you know, we can. At different times periodically throughout the day, we can look at license plates and find out whose vehicles they are.
By the odds. Because it's, it's, yeah, we need to keep those parks possible. Last thing, what are the chances of traveling flooding as we do the next week or two? And are we prepared for any possibility? We have sand up there available, sandbags available. Behind the vehicle on this.
And Jeff King has sandbags staged at different locations and then if the need arises, we all sand for those locations. In an emergency. So sandbags, yes, are covered. Luckily, I think last week we were kind of worried because it looked like we'd get a lot of moisture at the end of the week. That wasn't snow. And we had a lot of snow stacked up, but it stayed cold and we didn't get as much moisture, so. The ninety-six event, you know, it's one, a lot of snow stacked up and then the temperature. The snow elevation went way up and everything melted and rained and, and so far we haven't seen that.
Right.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we have the supplies if, if needed. Yes. Yeah.
And my questions, thank you guys.
Welcome.
One question I had, Gordy. Individuals plowing county roads. Is that frowned upon or do you guys accept the help when individuals? Because it might be days before the county can get there. And then are they assuming the liability, any liability if they're, if they're plowing on a county road?
And. We have issued permits for people to do work on the road and it'd be better if people called us before they just did it.
Okay.
That we can talk about it and then work through those kinds of details.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not thinking, you know, when we contract out, but just, you know, people are trying to get out and, you know, it's not a collector road and it might be far down. Or it might be a road that there's now houses on a county road where there used to be no houses on it. I was, I was. Nestor Peak Road, which is a county road, was brought up to me recently by constituents saying. They can't get out, they've got to, they've got to go and it's a county road.
Yeah, if, if you just point them in our direction, we'll, we'll talk to them and work it out.
Okay.
We've had people do work, private citizens, you know, get permits to do work on roads, so that's possible.
Okay. That is all I had. Commissioner Satter, anything else? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And please tell all of your snowplow drivers, thank you for all the overtime and all the work they've been putting in. As well as the grounds crew, they've been doing a great job.
Will do.
Later. All right, thanks Jeff for sending that, sure, we spot ourselves.
Okay.
All right. Board pending. Gentlemen, what do you have?
Um, I would say no water. Not much.
Commissioner Satter, is there anything you had?
No, not that I would add to the earlier discussion we had about the solar taxation.
That's, that's kind of the only thing I was wanting to talk about is the solar taxation thing. I don't see that forty-five hundred is gonna be enough based on the value. I think that that is pretty much a gift to the solar company. But I haven't, I haven't fully run the numbers, but when I look at, you know, say, say you pay eight, eight thousand dollars today for year number one. Is worth a lot more today than it is, say, five years from now. We need to be capturing the cost, the opportunity cost of, of money. And the net present value of those dollars. You figure every year you lose four percent value minimum on that, on those dollars. And if we were able to get the dollars today and bank them or somehow get some sort of return on those dollars. We'd be better off than averaging it over ten years at a reduced, reduced amount. Unless that amount is. Can, can incorporate those additional costs. I know we do it differently with the landfill. My first, my, my first thought though is, is that the way that they do it in Idaho where it's, you know, a percentage of gross. Then you gain and lose with them and with the economy and with the price of power over time. That might have more upside for the county over the long run than what's currently there. Because that would remain over the course of the entire lifespan of the project versus. You know, if it, if it sinks out at twenty-nine percent after ten years and it's, and it's gonna be making, producing power for thirty years. That, that doesn't seem really equitable over the long term.
It's, it's gonna be making more in year fifteen than it makes year one.
Right.
Revenue from it. And, and, I mean, this is. Better than nothing. But it's obviously what they want, which is about pretty close to nothing in their eyes. And I agree with you, the way Idaho does it is a better fare. For the counties over the long term. If there was a possibility to get in that direction this late.
I don't disagree with that, the only comment I make, and I don't have any way to, I mean, we can do some. I think we need to do a lot more research on what the actual numbers are and what other, because, you know, at this point. Most of what we're working on as far as in other places is provided by them. I don't necessarily believe that. And they are gonna send their. Their PowerPoint. That they use, they had three or four slides with some statistics on them, which I wanted because I wanted to be able to verify those numbers. But based on there, they were showing the Idaho model, which is a percentage of. If, you know, if their numbers are accurate, they pay about thirty percent of the taxes in Idaho that they do here in Washington. Or in Oregon, using that method, so they pay a gross, but what that calculates into. In Idaho is they, people, the, those, these projects pay much less taxes in Idaho than they do here in Oregon. And so I'm not saying that method is necessarily wrong. But. What it generates in revenue, if you're using the Idaho numbers. It's a lot like there, and that's part of the reason why the projects are gonna get built. That's the argument they're making. Is when you look at the tax schemes in other states, there it's, you want to be competitive. And they're saying that our taxing system in Washington makes it less competitive that these projects will just get built somewhere else.
Which is exactly what's happening today. So they're gonna get built here, they're, they're just arguing for the lowest tax rate truly possible.
I, I agree, they've been, they've been currently, they're, they're getting built here, they have been getting built here. And when they say we don't have a tax structure that's equitable to them to build them here. Well, that doesn't make any darn sense to me when they've already been, when they're already doing it. Sounds, sounds like you're just trying to get a better deal.
Right.
And you're blowing a whole lot of smoke.
Well, they're, they're. They're a private company and a private company is always gonna look after their investment. So. That's what they're doing, I don't fault them for it, any private company is gonna be the same thing.
I said, I don't have any issue with the current, the only issue I have with the current. System and the rates that are being paid is just that depreciation. If it, like, I don't really have any, I got no dog in the fight as far as the amount and what it is, I think it's. Because it's, it's equitable and it's treated the same as any other asset that the, you pay taxes. If it's worth more, you pay more taxes, that's just how our system is. The issue I have that bothers me is that that depreciation and that shift that's going on. Really translates into. It's a tax increase for the regular taxpayers that they don't know about, didn't have any say about. And are basically unaware. And that doesn't seem so. If there's a way to get rid of that, I'm in favor of that.
And I, like I said, I think what you're gonna find is. Is the one. And I, like I said, I think what you're gonna find is, is the want to double it. Because those panels are still gonna be putting out in thirty years, they're still gonna be running at a good eighty, eighty-five percent efficiency. And they're still gonna be making eighty-five percent of their revenue today, add inflation to that. Yet they're gonna try to give us this whole tax deal. Or pill deal as a much reduced number, and then when they do their deconditioning bond, they're gonna try to say, oh no, that one is eighty-five percent. So, it needs to, they need to be aware that those numbers need to drive it. Yeah, they're gonna try to say, oh no, our project is only thirty percent efficient in twenty-five years, then you have to set it bottom. Because you're the one that gave me the number, you can't, you can't have it both ways.
No, I mean, I would much rather, I, I think the depreciation schedule is not correct. I think it should be based more on power production. Cause yeah, ten years in, you know, it's depreciated eight and a half percent per year, they depreciated down to, you know, twenty-five or thirty percent of the value, that project is not worth. It has not devalued by seventy percent, they're just being seventy percent less, yeah, it's likely, it really hasn't, it's only. Even using their numbers where their efficiencies have gone down and it's only, you know, so maybe their power production has declined, you know, five percent. It's actually more profitable, they make more money, but their tax burden went down seventy percent and their production went down five percent. They are not connected to each other, the, the value should be tied to the taxes should be valued on the production of what, the income.
Ideally, however you want to do it, ideally it'd be based on the income or percentage of the income. Any other way is better than what we have and just as great.
So I guess the one issue we'd have is, is that in Oregon, they could do that, but in Washington, we can't institute an income tax. And if you base it on income, um. That it's against the, you know, state law.
Um, no, because right now of the three ways the assessor can evaluate every year is, one of them is a. Based model, the problem is, is as she testified, she doesn't have the. Uh, staffing to do such a thing, she would have to hire her out every year at a cost of, what I think she said, eighty thousand dollars to do the assessments. On an income method. And right now, the, the Department of Revenue recommends that she use cost, so that's what she's doing. If, if we could get the legislator or the Department of Revenue to recommend income. Whether her staff does the taxation model or we hire a, a private firm to do that. We would probably be much better off over the course of thirty years. It is a doable thing now, it's just. The assessor would have to want to do it that way. And right now, she's following guidance.
So I wonder, I wonder if there's a way that we can find a valuation that's, that's equitable, which. In Idaho, I think it's three and a half percent, but say it was five percent of gross and that would be a, a pill. Then, then just have it set at five percent of gross for the life of the project. Um, to me, that would, that would be a more equitable distribution that would continue to bring in dollars at roughly the same amount. Uh, adjusted for inflation over the course of thirty years.
And use their, their revenue numbers so that we don't have to hire someone for eighty grand to go do an estimate and evaluate their product.
Right, but these large, these large projects have purchase power agreements.
Right.
And so, that's in contract. Right.
And, uh, and just take whatever percent from that. I, I like that. The, the solar company would like it, but yeah.
What are your thoughts, Dave?
I don't know, I mean, I, it's, you know, this is their. Their, uh, shot at it too, I don't know that anything's gonna happen and again, anything that they, I mean, that's one thing about this. They say they, you know, this flies through the legislature, they adopted the way they drafted it, whether we like, it's still optional, it's not, it's not a requirement. They're, they're stuck with the current taxing system. It's at the Board of Commissioners discretion whether they have the tool or would want to use it. So.
So it's at our discretion, not their discretion, which way they want to do it.
Yep. No, no, it's not mandatory, it's, it is, it's not.
Well, it wasn't mandatory, I thought this just gave them another avenue to pick and choose.
No, the county chooses. And so you may have counties, again, like I said, that if the traditional way of doing it does generate more revenue. But it's, it's that goes on the tax rolls, that depreciates, the shift is taking place, there could be jurisdictions that that, because that's gonna generate the most amount of money. They're gonna choose, no, that's what we want to do, we don't care about the shift because it's not a big deal, you could have other ones where they would maybe, you, they would say, ah, I'd rather get. Forty-five hundred dollars a megawatt and it doesn't want to tax rules and it's, they, they made, so I mean. Ultimately, there will be, the, the county will decide if it's, like, the legislature could pass it, but it's, it's the local option. You know, at this point, I don't know that I would support this option as it.
So theoretically, this taxes, you can still work out a legislative ethics to allow or have the Department of Revenue. Recommend to the assessor that she does it based off of income, as opposed to cost. But we're still up to the assessor. Before the, whoever.
Right.
Uh, wants to do.
Right, it would be the assessor ultimately decides how it assess, cause this, that's why this is a pill, so it's outside of.
But I think we still get pressure there because I think the depreciation standard. In fifteen years, the set for wind mills needs to have another one set for solar that's, that they can add to.
Right.
As an amendment, even that exists.
Oh, well, I mean, you can make the same argument with wind, because it's not like in year fifteen, those things fall down and don't generate more power.
Have a development.
Well, right.
So, right up next to that.
I don't think that that was a question was asked about the power yesterday, I said, you know, it will likely happen because of efficiencies, but it is probably more fifteen or twenty years out. Because, uh, it's, you're not gonna have, uh. It's unlikely that you're gonna see the such big changes to efficiency, the, the order of powering.
They say three percent per year. Efficiency loss.
Well then, why, yeah, so why does their equipment depreciate?
But even then, it's fair three percent per year, you know, at the end of twenty years, you're only fifty percent efficiency, but. Right, it's bad math.
Right. So I don't know, I have less heartburn about all of it because again, as long as it's local option. I would love, I wish we had that model all the time for the legislature did stuff that was optional and then if it was something crappy, we would say, yeah, no thanks, doesn't fit for us.
I just said I have less heartburn now than I do.
Yeah.
But trying to get as.
So I'm not gonna lose any sleep over if this passes that we're not thrilled with it.
Right, but.
I'd rather make.
Something, if this is our one shot though, to have our say in it, because if this passes, they're not, the legislature's not gonna come through next year and pass another one.
No.
And so I would say that we need to try to push and amend it to what we would like or what we would like to actually implement. Um, and then also add to it, you know, right now, these, these companies, they're gonna use, um. Union labor, which isn't primarily gonna come from Clickattack County. And they're got, and then they're gonna save a bunch of money on their sales tax on top of it, so we're not gonna get that. So we could also add in there the change so that at least the county portion of the sales tax actually comes to the county. Um, I think we, we've given, we give enough. If you know what I mean.
So are you saying, put a, try to put an amendment on this bill to trade success tax in the county?
Yeah.
Do you think it would be wise to? I guess I would say take their language in their bill, change the language to what we want, give a side-by-side comparison of here's what they want, here's what we want.
Well, I think, I think the discussion is.
Sales tax thing stays.
It, it's easier to run or to amend that bill and run it through as one bill than to have two competing bills sitting out there, because. When you have two competing bills, the legislature usually says, well, why don't you go back and figure it out and come back to us next year?
Yeah, I don't disagree on the sales tax part, but I think just from a. From a procedural way, I don't think that's possible, like, we have all this sort of wish list of things that we want to get. Cause I think the sales tax exemptions is in a completely different part of the, of, of the tax code and the.
That needs to be a different bill, if, just the sales tax part.
Right.
I suspect, I don't know, I mean, it is like we do, like, we have, we don't, because it is, you know, we have these projects that are coming. We're getting less benefit locally because they, they don't use a lot of local labor. Typically. And we're not getting any sales tax, because they're pretty much sales tax exempt now. Uh, the, the, the state has made it that way. And so, and now they want to pay less in property taxes too, and so it is, it's, gets to that point of how supportive of the industry can be. County where the, the equation gets to be to the point where, you know, maybe you don't want to encourage these things because the debt benefit is not necessarily, because there are impacts.
Or you don't want to encourage it until it's actually valuable to the county.
Right. Good point, you know, that is, that's the math that's going on, that's the calculus of how, and it is. In my mind, it's different, I mean, it's obviously different for wind projects than solar projects, the, the, the math is different and they even actually just bill, they amended this bill. Cause you remember in the draft, it had a blank or the pill on, uh, potential pill for wind. And they have negotiated with, they unofficially get set, but that figures out eighty-five hundred for wind. That's forty-five hundred for solar, eighty-five hundred dollars for wind, because they are saying, um, they're indicating that. Capital, you know, that wind has, pays higher taxes because of the cost, that solar is cheaper to install per megawatt. And so, using the, the current system, you're not gonna generate as much per megawatt tax revenue. If you set a wind project and a solar project side by side. Which then, why anybody would even build wind, because when you're, when you're selling the product. If it costs twice as much to produce it, you're not gonna make as much, but solar is gonna be more profitable than wind. And I, that's why I'm terrified the math doesn't drive.
Especially when you start adding in land leases and, you know, their costs.
Dave, doesn't that come down to the federal tax exemptions and how it's, how that works out?
I mean, that's what they indicated, like, they get the, right now, and it is getting smaller, the, what do they call it, the.
There's an industrial exemption and then there's the.
Cause they, they get theirs upfront, solar gets theirs upfront thirty percent, wind, it's a production tax credit, so it phases in over a period of time. And so I think it goes back to the, that, what's the value of the money? He was, he was. Um, so I don't, I don't know that, yeah, that the tax systems are different as far as the federal tax credits are different for wind and solar. But that's what I need to be, is that, is there any legitimacy? If, that, if you change nothing. Are these solar farms gonna go on the tax rolls at the same value as are historically the wind farms? Or not, because we don't know at this point, we will get a real life thing this year, it's the one that's, it's going live, the one out, the, the first one that was constructed. It will get assessed taxes for payment in twenty-three. So then we'll know, but at this point, we're speculating on all of this.
Does this bill have anything to do with that, because the solar farm is only looking at themselves and not anybody else? But is there anything in it that would affect how we tax the landowner for their property lease? Or if you charge them an income method? For the income they're generating of their property. Uh, we. Cause that was gonna be something that I don't think a lot of the homeowners realize.
Yeah, I don't, no, there's nothing in this, there's no, I mean, it's only two pages, so it's.
It's not even figured out, it's all. I don't know why it wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 the bad thing in a sense is that we are on the cutting edge, because we're, we're here, we're, we're out there as far as in Washington State. It's, there's, there's others coming, there's stuff going, but we're the ones out on the edge.
That's why worries, we're gonna have all of our projects done and we, and the taxing is gonna be set and the, the state's gonna fix it a year from now, everybody else. It would have lost out on.
Yes, we, we should be able, there is a solar project up, was it in Stevens County or somewhere out in the central basin? Um, up by Davenport, I think, that we should be able to look and, and see exactly how it, it worked out.
That's what I need, is I need some real world. Washington, Washington numbers to just check, like, my, my point has always been, I don't want to soak them, I'm not trying to, but I want it to be equitable and fair. And I don't want that, I don't want the depreciation on the tax rolls, I think that is a super negative thing for our citizens. Especially for some junior taxing districts, because, you know, we're only looking at it from like the county general fund and the county road fund where it's thirty percent. You have districts that they could, like, if you park one of those projects in a, in a small district, it might increase their, yeah, they'll get this huge influx of cash. You know, like, they, they could, you know, double or triple their revenue, but then they don't have any ability to not keep getting that much, and then. That's, so it's not shifting eight percent per year, it might be shifting ten, fifteen percent per year as that is depreciating down and.
Or even the bigger districts. Fire district, seven's a big fire district, but. As you triple the value of the land in seven, are they really gonna lower their numbers when they don't set that number?
They're gonna, and the juniors, you know, at least they would have, just like we would, we actually could adjust our levy rate if Jones tab.
Right, but will they?
Well, but will they, but you also have to trust the, you know, folks are locally elected and if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, they're, they get rid of it. Well, they'll know eventually, you know, but you have to understand that a big chunk of what we pay, we don't set, it's state's burden, the legislature sets it. And I can guarantee you, they're not gonna give it that, they're not gonna say, oh, that's depreciating, that we're shifting this big burden to the local tax.
But this is a very confusing, it is, argument that literally took me years to understand. How are you gonna get the general public to understand? Or the, the junior districts and whatnot.
Well, it's gonna have to be the understanding of your levy, that's the high, that, that's your maximum allowable levy, doesn't mean you have to take it.
Well, maybe the fireworks.
You know, but it's really hard and I, you know, I, the state is not going to, they're, you know, they max it out every year, they're not gonna give it that. It's never gonna happen, so even if we want to do, we don't have the ability to mitigate that much depreciation, we can't do it if we said, oh. We're gonna take less revenue every year by the amount of the depreciation, so that our taxpayers are basically paying the same amount every year. So that our taxpayers are basically paying the same amount every year to the county general fund. We have that ability to do that, but it wouldn't really change the tax bill because we're only a little piece of it. So we're, we're adjusting.
Situation like this. They start rolling in money, they start building high schools, middle schools, junior years. And then ten years from now, they still have those payments.
Right.
But all of a sudden, they're depreciated out. So that's what we need to. Consider rather than.
No, I want to fix it, I just to fix it.
The problem is educating.
Anything else for the good of the order?
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn until one.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
Motion carries. See you, Jim, boys in a while. One o'clock, we will call the regular business meeting to order for the, uh, January eleventh. For the Board of County Commissioners. Um, if everyone will please stand, we will start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion for the business agenda.
As the chairman, I make a motion to approve the business agenda with one add-on under new business. Request for authorization to lease an IQ material X forty-four hundred scanner.
Sorry.
That first purchase.
No, the scanner is from.
Right. The bullet said it, IQ material was the bottle.
That is right, but I see I had Connor.
Yep, no, I have, I have it. Uh, from Ken for the monthly cost of a hundred and ninety-five dollars for a thirty-six month period.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, moving on to the meeting minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes. From December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one as presented.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, and I will abstain as I was not there. So please let the record show, motion carries. We will now move into citizen comment until one twenty-five. Um, individuals will have three minutes. Uh, you don't have to use all three minutes of your time. And commissioners will respond if they choose at one twenty-five. So don't expect a response from whatever you say right then. Uh, we will start, um. In the room as we usually do, if someone would like to give public comment, please come forward. I see, uh, come on up.
And then just come up to there and speak loud, make sure everybody can hear you. Take the mask down when you speak so everybody can hear.
Yeah, it's a muffler too. Dave West, center bill. Legislative session. It reminds me of the old Mac Wild Horse Race. That's what we're about to watch. Uh, the recurring bill. I certainly request the county stand in opposition against it as it is. Uh, it could truly be devastating. To agriculture throughout the state, not just our county. The attempt from the, uh, two senators who's. Decided they're going to pick Clickatack County so we can't use hounds to chase, uh, destructive wildlife anymore. I don't think I've ever seen their names on our ballots. And regardless of what the topic is, I'm against the state cutting off local control or anything. And then as an item of note, the state barn bureau. Folks, well, we intend on having finished this week and file an amicus brief that supports the track fee lawsuit on behalf of the county. All I have. Thank you, guys.
All right, next online, we have firsthand up is Vern Harple.
Uh, thank you. Um, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Vern Harple. I live in Lyle. Um, I speak to you today with fifty-two-year career perspective in public health. Um, my testimony today is to provide my ideas and how to go about the process. Of expanding the board of health from five members to six per the recent RCW changes that was discussed in the morning's meeting. Um, my first just. Thought that I'm sure has all crossed your mind is the RCWs will require you to have an even number of board members, which is. Ridiculous. So you have to consider that and I'm sure you already have. But, but beyond that, um, I, I, I just am here with a real positive note to, I want you to kind of embrace the task. This task is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity, um. To add to the expertise of our continued health of our community. You are at a moment in time where your efforts will depoliticize the science and celebrate the success. Of this most American institution. Uh, the first requirement of the constitution, the pursuit of life. I'm being a little dramatic, but with that flourish, I'll give you my spiel and you can be on your way. Um, I really want you to approach this process as that, as, as if you're not appro, you're not a, appointing a Supreme Court judge. You're looking for stakeholders with technical skills. I heard the commissioners this morning stating that non-elected members need to represent the people. Um, that by definition, definition is the commissioner's job. The members, the non-elected members are not there to elect to, to support the people. That's your job. The members that you select will be. Technical experts that will help you do your job. Your job is to, to represent the people. Um, my ideas for stakeholders. Uh, are the institutions that suffer when public health fails. Particularly the schools, the hospitals, the jail. Um, that's where I'd look, encourage you to look for your, um. Non-elected members to the board in the future. My idea was you could get around the whole. Idea of writing job descriptions, job requirements, selection process. Of which you are going to have to do. Um, you've already taken applications that I don't even think have been publicly. Uh, um, asked for yet. I don't know you have a job description. Um, all these things you're going to have to do, um, over the next few months and that's good. Or my idea would be you just could get around this whole process by appointing. A. Hospital commissioner. A superintendent and somebody that supervises the jail. Um.
Vern, your three minutes are up. I'm sorry. I, I apologize, Vern. We keep to our rules. Uh, please provide written, written comment and I will be sure to, to, um, view it and I'm sure my seatmates will as well.
Um, okay, social determinants of health, please make sure any person who applies for this understands that mantra. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vern. All right, we are going to go back into the, uh. Person, if anybody is willing to come forward. Um, Lee, if you would un-spotlight Vern so I can. See what's going on in the.
Okay. Thank you.
Just speak loud for the mic that's over here.
I don't know where the microphone is. Good afternoon, commissioners. I want to speak on two things and I will stay within my three minutes. Um, I think that you've had your plate filled with. The state of Washington continuing to take more of the county's roles and responsibilities. I heard you this morning on the meeting. Dealing with the public health board and so on and so forth. I would encourage one or all of the commissioners, of course, individually to tune into the state board of health meeting tomorrow. They're considering WAC two four six dash one zero zero dash zero four zero, and I have a printed copy that I'll leave with the secretary. Regarding quarantine and isolation. I don't see it in any alarmist way, but I think it's when, uh. You talk about removing the basic rights of any person in the United States, it better be a very serious discussion. My main point that I'd like to talk about today though, is actually, uh, introduce legislation to increase stream buffers. Which, uh, I will give you, uh, a copy of an article. It's a commentary. It is not a news article. It is commentary about. Uh, making stream buffers three hundred feet wide, up to three hundred feet wide. On each side, as I understand, of streams. For perspective, if you have one thousand feet of stream crossing your property and a three hundred foot boundary. You would lose the right to access to six point eight eight acres of your property. And I would encourage you to speak with, I believe it's WASAC, which is the county commissioner state organization, if I remember correctly. And get behind some way to comment and sway this legislation because it is going to definitely affect. The primary keepers of open land. In the county and in the state, which are farmers and ranchers and timberland owners to a very, in a very negative. I will leave copies of these with the secretary. Thank you for taking time to listen.
Thank you. We are going to go.
About the same recurring area that Mr. West was. Yes, just calling this. Thank you.
That was Dean Barto for the record, by the way.
Yes, it was.
All right. Thank you. Next, we are going to go to Gabriel Gilbert. Online. Gabrielle, you are muted, um, unless you are not trying to speak. Okay, if Gabrielle's not there, we will go down the line online to Lynn Mason. Lynn, if you would.
Hi, I'm here. Um, good afternoon, commissioners. Um, I just wanted to ask, uh, what happened to the recordings of the board of county commissioner meetings that used to be posted online? I see that when I entered the Zoom meeting, I'm being asked to consent to joining the recorded meetings. Where do those recordings go? How can folks ac, access them? Um, I checked with bordering counties to see if this is the norm to have no recorded meetings available. And I checked with Stevenson, Yakima and Benton counties. I checked with Morrow, Sherman, Wasco and Hood River counties. All provide online video recordings of their meetings. Um. Stevenson provides an audio recording. To bring myself up to date for this meeting, I went to check the minutes. And the last minutes are from November of, November twenty-third of last year. I bring this up because firstly, I thought the motion to archive video. Brought forward by Commissioner Christopher was voted down in a previous meeting. Secondly, it makes it very hard for the public to participate in up-to-date topics and decisions. It makes it hard to participate in with our county government. It gives the impression that you're trying to shut the public out. Um, I've, I've heard in the past, uh. Talk of pulling the plug on virtual meetings because it's not required by law to provide them and only have in-person meetings. Um. I just feel that that does not build trust, uh, with the community and it's terrible customer service for the people who, um, are the public that voted you in. So I would really like to be commenting on county business today, but since I don't know what has occurred, I have to resort to this. Um. Since I have more time, I do want to add that, uh, on a different topic. We need an animal shelter. Um, the undersheriff has taken on this cause for. I, I guess his campaign. Um. And this is something that I feel is very important. Um, I know, uh, it, there was a facility before. And it was run quite well, and I would like to see that up and running again. And I think, um, that is something that the county, uh, should be overseeing. Because it's a part of our community. It makes our community safer and, and a better community. And I'd like to see it to be a no kill shelter. As well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And great job using the entirety of your three minutes. Um, going back to the room. Is there anybody?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if there's no one in the room, uh, online, Pat Arnold. I see you.
I'm Pat Arnold. I just wanted to respond to something that, uh, previous speaker said about. The cougar, upcoming cougar legislation. I request that y'all take a. Lotful look at this, uh, Sheriff Songer was on the radio. Week or two ago, talking about his cougar program and what was notable about that was that. He's only concerned with one part of the WDFW mission, which is public safety, and that is part of their mission. But he was dismissive of the biologists at WDFW and the other part of the WDFW mission, which is to. Monitor and protect. Of species survival, not just cougars, but predators and other species, western gray squirrel. I mean, we're all familiar with this stuff, so. I think that it's appropriate for WDFW to have the ability to, uh. Supervise and control both parts of their mission. And that's part of the intent of this legislation, I'm sure, is to. Allow both of those things to go forward. So I just requesting that you. Think this through and, uh, take some time with it. Um, there's some WDFW commission meetings coming up on cougar. Safety, what is public health and things like that. So th, this will be going on for a little bit. It is legislative session, so it won't go on for too long, but, um, there's a little bit of time to think about it. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. All right, we will open it up one more time to end the audience, if anybody has changed their minds. I'm guessing nobody's coming up. I can't see anything. It's still on Pat's. Um, Gabrielle Gilbert, are you there now?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, Gabrielle, your turn.
Okay, I first want to thank the county employees that I spoke to and email exchanges that I had concerning the need for the county to take a leading role in getting daycare. Um, they were the definition of professional and courteous and helpful. The Columbia Gorge newspaper just ran a recent article at the end of December about the, uh. Crisis situation about childcare, um, in the area, and they mentioned Clickatack County in that article. Um, you have a brand new multimillion dollar building. And I'm asking the commissioners to find a room in that building that can be a start of a daycare facility in Goldendale for your county employees and others. In discussions with Christopher, um, co, Commissioner Christopher, and I appreciate the time he took to talk to me. Um, the estimated investment from the county would be one million dollars and that would include a facility and staff. But if you have a new building that can provide a space, then you really have a county investment that is just staff and materials that you could look into. You cannot solve this if you do not even mention it in your ten-year economic development plan, and that is an oversight that needs to be addressed. And you cannot solve this by hand wringing and pointing to a two-year-old non-binding committee. You have to take a leading role the same way you did to garner the funds to get your new county building. You built a new county facility because you identified the need, and that's the same process required in addressing the need of daycare in the county. And you do not solve this by merely identifying the economic, you have to address the economic loss, the lack of daycare con, um, contribute, the, the, the contribution that. Um, the lack of daycare has on local economics, the loss of skilled labor, the brain drain. And the ability to attract skilled workers. The stress on families, and this should be. Your drivers and when you're discussing this as commissioners. Um, I think that this can be solved. And I guess what we're asking of you is to start solving it, but in, in real meaningful ways. Um, and so I look forward to hearing what the commissioners have plans. Thank you for your time. Oh, and. Um, and so I look forward to hearing what the commissioners have plans. Thank you for your time. Oh, and quickly, if I do have time. The state senators that are addressing the wildlife policy here in Clickatac. Are addressing the fact that the propaganda the sheriff uses about caring uh about the lives of young children and. Is ludicrous as there's been no deaths concerning um wildlife and children. The other thing is the loss of life that we've had in the county of Clickatac that affects children is suicide or neglect and abuse. And I think that when we address the fact that there are agencies, state agencies that address wildlife. They need to go back to being the drivers in that decision-making and to get it out of the hands. Um, and you can't be hound hunting, it's illegal to hound hunt. Um, and uh when you're searching for an animal that's um left the property, you're hound hunting illegally and poaching, and you need to. And I hope that the senators are successful in addressing this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I will go back to the room if there is anyone there.
Any repeats allowed?
Nope, no repeats allowed.
I didn't use the whole three minutes. You did not.
I don't know what you had left, but we've got one more on the phone, so we're still going. Uh, three, three, seven, six.
Hello, Ken McEwen here in Goldendale. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Christopher, for answering my uh communication with you concerning Annex One. Uh, you said that uh this lot. Is not about parking for the public on Main Street. The county needs parking for its county vehicle and needs to build secured garages for our buses. Uh, it just so happens that that building, Annex One, was originally built by the PUD. And that's exactly what it did, and it housed their equipment, it housed their, their trucks, their service trucks. So when the county got a hold of it, they built all those offices in there. And so if you were to go ahead and gut it, you would have a wide open shop garage there to park buses. And you wouldn't have to tear it down. You could utilize it the way it is. So when we get to talking about this next week, uh, in the afternoon. I want you to recall the fact that originally, that's exactly what that building is. It's, it's, it's a building ready to be used. As secured garage, uh secured garage for your county vehicle. So it makes no sense, it's not logical, to tear something down and rebuild, spend county money. To, to build something that really we, we, we wouldn't need if we just put a little time and thought and money into the, the current building. So I'll be looking forward to talking with you guys next week and. You know, that uh Commissioner Christopher said that it, he needs to, he was elected to manage taxpayer funds. In a fiscally conservative way. He says spending tons to replace this lot and evicting people will. Anyway, he was talking about the, the cost, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars times two. To cover the cost to get a new lot because they gotta uh buy new lots and move people out of their homes and stuff. You don't have to do that, just keep the building you got. And, and uh. Save a lot of money, save a lot of uh uh costs for, for uh. Reconstruction, you know, of a construction of a new building. Thank you. That's all I have to say for today. Talk with you next week.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Okay, we have time for one more. Is there anyone in the room who would like to give public comment? I don't know if anybody's walking forward. Nobody, okay. Uh, Russ has raised his hand. Russ.
Uh, Zach, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Russ.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, Russ Hansen here at Goldendale. I'd just like to echo, echo uh Mr. Barto's comments, reference the State Board of Health meeting tomorrow, and I would encourage uh everyone to tune in at one thirty. They're gonna be taking public testimony on that, too, and it's concerning the uh, the whack he cited, two forty-six dash one hundred dash zero four zero. Which has to do with procedures for isolation and quarantine. And what they're wanting to do is include COVID nineteen under this whack. Which would allow any local health officer in the state. To issue emergency detention orders to people who don't voluntarily comply with the governor's COVID mandates. This could be anything from testing to vaccination fee or anything else, and I just find it, it's really concerning that this much power is gonna be. Given to unelected officials. Uh, this health officer may also invoke the powers of local police officers, sheriffs, constables, and any other employees. Uh, near jurisdiction to enforce this uh. Quarantine. I just think it's something that we need to keep our eye on and be concerned about. And I just appreciate you taking the time today.
Thank you, Russ. And if we could have Ken muted, please. We're getting feedback. Thank you. Okay, being one twenty-five, we're gonna move into commissioner responses if they so choose. Gentlemen, is there anything you'd like to say? I can't see if you raise your hand because it's still showing um Mr. Hanson's phone. So once you guys say something, it'll pop back up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Christopher. I'd like to start by allowing. Uh, our clerk to give a comment regarding recording minutes, uh, meeting minutes, or anything else pertinent that you wanted to answer from earlier.
I'm gonna defer to Ibi Jane. She is the one that posts those minutes.
Okay. You guys can hear me, because I feel really bad.
It actually sounds really, it sounds really good today.
In response to Lynn Mason's testimony earlier.
Yes, okay, so for our storage, we have changed from storing on our hard drive to the Google Drive. And when we did that, we don't know if somehow it changed the encryption or what happened. But when we post them on the website, you have to be in Google Chrome to be able to watch videos. If you try to watch them on Internet Explorer or anything else, they just, they don't, they don't show up. So they're there, they're just different. And the meeting minutes have been approved, but were signed last week, and so I did not sign them because. Chairman Anderson wasn't here, so they will all be posted.
So we use a different browser for the meeting minutes. I know we had, this is Mr. Christopher again, I know we had discussions. On how many Zoom meetings we were gonna store uh on there because that's a lot of data. And the more data you store, the more you're gonna pay somebody to store said data. And so we determined that I think we said that only the last six months. If we were gonna keep it within six months, so we don't end up with seven years of storage. Costing the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars to store old videos that people are watching.
I have one comment to add to that. We keep them, definitely. So if it's not on the website, someone can always email us and request a particular video.
Video, right. Uh, and then uh Ken McEwen, you're talking about Annex One, you said. Sounded like you were aware that we were gonna have a meeting with Public Works uh next week in the afternoon. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware we were gonna have a meeting with Public Works next week in the afternoon to discuss Annex One. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Soder, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I would add is to the uh first comment, Mr. Hartwell, and as far as the. His comments about the application process, uh, the applications that we were speaking of this morning were not. Uh, exclusive of uh vacancy on the Board of Health. That is just our general, we have, people can apply for any. Any board or commission basically at any time, and we have those on file. I think we keep them for two years. And so it's uh, yes, as far as, we have not had any kind of specific advertisement to a vacancy on the Board of Health. But we generally do ask people all the time, if you have any interest in serving on anything, you can submit an application anytime. Those are the applications that we were talking about. Uh, to the other comment about the. Uh, virtual meetings that may have been based on a comment that I had made about the uh couple, three weeks ago about. Uh, and I, I will reiterate that we're not required to have. We are meeting in person. Uh, I do want to be clear, though, I do definitely support the use of online and people being able to participate virtually. I don't have any interest in, in not having that uh as far as for our regular business meeting. Because I think it does, it makes it easier for people, so you don't have to travel to go. I was just making the point that it's, it's not a requirement, um, but that we are.
Certifications, Commissioner Christopher, and we're doing it for our regular meetings on Tuesday. We are not recording Thursday workshops because there's no action taken, and we're trying to save data storage to save the taxpayers money.
And I would like to say, um, thank you, everyone, for giving your public comment and for being polite. And for not name-calling or doing anything else. This is exactly what we want to see with public comment. Um, and it gives us a chance to respond as well. Um, I would, I would ask, um, are either of my seatmates planning on attending the. Board, State Board of Health meeting tomorrow that has been mentioned by at least two speakers today?
I have a rural county insurance pool meeting at the same exact time, so I.
I'm going to attempt to log on throughout the day. I've got um meetings with senators and legislators throughout the day, too. Um, and then next, um, it was asked if we would uh take a stand with regards to their riparian bill. Um, how do you two feel about that?
Um, this is Mr. Christopher, I want to look into that a smidgen more. Um, just to make sure I have all my i's dotted, my t's crossed. Uh, and I also want to look into the word joke. For the same regard, and, and so next week, maybe we can come up with incentives about. Standing together as a board.
Yeah, I would concur with that. I, I need to check the language on the riparian bill. I suspect. Where I'm at on it, I. I, it will definitely be a topic on Friday's Legislative Steering Committee meeting as far as whether state WASAC takes a decision. I suspect I know what the position will be, but I do, I never like to commit it until I actually read the language to make sure. Because sometimes we do get misled from time to time. Not that I'm suggesting we're being misled, but. I've, I've learned from experience to tread carefully and to be thoughtful, and I will do the same thing. I had, all I saw was the, as far as on the, the other legislation, proposed legislation on the Cougars. All I've seen is the press releases with a response from that, so I'm not gonna take a, I'm not gonna comment until I actually see what they're.
And, and I've read both, and I would, um, I would say it would be good for us to have a discussion next week on both of these pieces of legislation. Um, as well as uh any take that our prosecuting attorney would like to give us on it as well before we do um make a decision. Is there anything else? Hearing none, we are going to move on to Department Update, Director Jeff King. Please come forward.
Nobody wants to listen to me. I won't take it first.
You got legislation out there, too.
Yes, I do. So here's my revised and updated version, uh, all right, Chairman Anderson.
I'll email it to him.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is up, there's been a lot happening in the last five days.
This is more than what we.
Yes, so what I submit on Thursday morning by ten a.m. So never what is actually. Report on Tuesday, that's the Tuesday afternoon. Yeah, yeah, we go through this. I have things that I learned just before I walked over.
Ibi, would you press the preset number two so that it'll zoom in on uh Director King? Nope, maybe it's number one or three. There we go, perfect.
We're getting so tech, you guys, yeah, gotta go in the sound. It's nice today, I like that.
What you're gonna be working on there.
Thank you. Way to go, IT.
Take them when you get them.
Go ahead, King.
Hey, thank you. So I'll start out as we usually do. We have nothing on the agenda. Hey, public safety radio system is uh functioning mostly normally at this time. I, I hate that saying that when you go a week. But uh. The, the multiple grid power outages that we had related to winter storms of the last week or so. Affecting the system. As it relates to all of those issues, the system in fact, online functioning normally. Perspective. We had a multiple extended outages of the laptop radio site. PUD had uh significant. Trouble getting to the laptop with some conditions, both on uh Monday and Tuesday, as well as over. Failed the second time. Tuesday, Sunday, finally able to get the laptop on Sunday. Which actually walked the distance. Get there with that tree on Sunday, so I want to put out a big kudos for PUD. Lightning and all the support personnel, I worked closely with them for the last seven or eight days. And I'll run I-Rig, it's their interim office manager, I think it's last day, it's later this week. Thanks to Kim for his cooperation and coordination with me during the process, all their hard work. However, that did put us in a precarious position for the propane tank fuel for the generator at Flacco. Still. Into that, but at this point, I've determined that we do not need to go there and refuel. Mr. Soder, we had, you had twenty fifteen, that's an expensive. And as I just walked in earlier, got a call. Our counterparts with US Cellular, there's also a laptop. He had gone to the site to check his own propane level. Dog out our propane tank. Red, dead bank, and we have sufficient fuel for the last. Do another multi-day event, so I'm not going to pull the trigger on a propane refueling expedition. Many thousands of dollars. But I will continue to monitor that situation. The Diamond Gap site, however, when the power failed there. On Tuesday afternoon, I believe it was, the generator failed to start. Play broadband is the responsible party at that shelter for the facilities, the generators specifically. They tried to get there on Thursday, unable to with their track vehicles. Once I was informed of that, and I started working with them to make another attempt on Friday. Myself and Sheriff's Track side by side to assist them. Figure out how to get that generator back online. Definitely, we're on backup power. Couple hours. Site went down, the batteries died, segment offline completely for over twelve hours. Affecting our public safety radio service to the local area.
And remind me if I just. Have some recollection of sometimes those batteries, if they fully discharge, they're, they're shot, they're no good.
That's correct. However, since that happened at Diamond Gap in twenty fourteen, uh, we put a low voltage disconnect. So if they get to that critical voltage, then the battery system shuts down and turns off.
Oh, that was an expensive word.
Yes, so we won't have to spend uh five thousand or so dollar funding batteries. But I am going to be working with Wave broadband and determine, determine its future threat. Going issues with their generator up there. Wave did the supervisor end decision Thursday night to not go on Friday. So I contacted the county's contractor for this purpose and I get them some big kudos. At 8:30 at night when I called the legacy power system technician and said, this is the situation with that public safety radio site online. Did we need to bring it to the right town? On and go and get that back online, which I approved and they did. 4:30 in the morning, the contractor began, but they made it to the site successfully. They again had to walk in the distance, but they couldn't get there on track, did it all the way. But that kept our outage to roughly 12 hours. By the time that they got the generator back in service, back up on the radio system. So given the circumstances, everything went as well as could, but it was very challenging to begin. With the cooperation, coordination, a whole bunch of folks. I don't know, emergency management side based. Regime system side separately. Probably when we're without power for multiple days during the last week. Everything got more complicated. ATT is also at a site at laptop. There, they lost power at laptop. Twice during the week. That was Monday at 6:30 until Tuesday at, uh, roughly 2:30 in the account. Thursday afternoon, afternoon or the evening until Sunday, nobody in the Triola Valley had ATT service. Or internet because their generator had failed previously and not getting replaced. So they went down hard immediately as soon as the power went out. Made life difficult for lots of people. The reason that the radio system is not functioning completely normally is the continuation of the microwave radio interference at Sacre Butte. Determine that that's where it's coming from, another, a shelter at Sacre Butte, a wireless site. Fortunately, that, that building is owned by Dave Wallace, who's our contracted support provider. They are working to get a hold of their. Mentor, figure out exactly what part is responsible for that interference that dealt with. I have great confidence that they'll be able to do that in time and fashion and stop this interference issue that we have. Any questions about the radio system? Performance and functionality. On the maintenance side, I've just put all that on the back burner due to the weather conditions and workload priorities. Same thing, let's get on hold since I talked to you last. You know, the priority, um, and the radio project. That's one piece last night, the public works and the contractor designed that site. Just a few updates on that. I have not communicated an update to fire district commissioners. Right to that, through time and space. But I am being reassured that the equipment that we needed to order by the end of the year was done. So we should not have any issues with that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bill, operations, Dr. Bob, I don't want to hear that.
All right, so, um. Don't have on number reports and, uh, we haven't had those for a few months. Uh, one of the issues there is the recording system with our, our phone. That's a little glitch which we were hoping to get resolved at the beginning of the year when we were going to run our update. And so that was put on hold, so. Um, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, on the staffing situation, we, staffing. At the same level, we have the three communication officers are in training, uh, still in training, which is, uh, really a good sign. And we, uh, see that they're progressing quite well. So the outcome should be good at the end of their training. And our most, you can see their training before fire season. That will be a huge relief on everybody. Um, we went ahead with the lead win kitchen officer promotions, um, Chester House and, um, Chip. Are going to be our two new leads and, uh, we met with them, uh, yesterday afternoon. And luckily they did not run out of the room.
Crime?
Yeah, and I gave them a plan, you know, plan for the year and there's going to be your workload. So they stuck around through the end, so it was a good sign. So, um, and right now they're, they're filling in, um, shifts as normal and we're hoping that once the, uh, three communication officers come out of training. Um, they'll have more time off the floor to complete other tasks and, and updates that we. Um, on the operations side, so I mentioned our phone system update, um, we rescheduled it. That was going to be done on the, I remember the third, which was the bit of the snow coming down on us. And, uh, the call volume increased throughout the gorge, uh, so we decided to hold that off. And, uh, reschedule, uh, because during the downtime, the phone system will be routed to our neighbors at community county. It will pick up phones and then transfer over to us. Uh, but that also involves the other agencies across the gorge, um, the river, Wasto and, uh, from here dispatch.
What was that?
Um, we were estimating the update is just a computer update that should be fairly simple. Um, it can come back, right? Uh, could come back as fast as, you know, five minutes, 30 minutes, um. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not. Or, uh, yeah, the advertised and, and the most that, you know, the contingency plan is going to be four hours. Um, at four hours, the plan will be, we revert everything back to the way it was before we started the update and come up with another plan. Later on, but bring the system back up. Um, so there is the contingency for that is, um, depending on the number of updates and how fast it runs, it could be up to four hours. So, and like you mentioned, we, we have the plan with our, uh, our neighboring agencies and the, um, along the board. Um, that would normally receive calls and transfer over to us. So that, that can be as seeming as, as possible for them as well. Um, so right now we're looking, uh, towards the, uh, end of the month, beginning of February for that.
Really complicating factor is the primary technician for the phone service provider is in Idaho. Storm.
Yeah.
Wasn't going to happen, was it?
Yeah. And, yeah, his, his safety is, is important as well. Um, so other than that, with that phone update, um, part of that is going to be working on the text to 911. Um, that would bring our system with those updates, um, and then we can progress down the line with training our communications officers and I'm making that connection with the state system, so. We're, we're hopeful that, that text to 911 will come to kick at, uh, this year, 2022. Still have a ongoing state access issue. That's the, as mentioned before. That's the state system for law enforcement where we check driver's license warrants and such. Things though, trying to work on bringing that up to speed. And then, um, last item here is going to be, um, state built 7555. Concerning communication officer state certification and recognition.
I apologize, I was not able to log. Update. Briefed on this legislation already, let us know.
Yeah, and, and I have it on the emails. I can send that out if you'd like. Yeah.
I haven't heard of it, but I don't know.
Okay, so, um, and I have it right here. I'll send it to your emails right now. Uh, it's going to be three attachments. Um, we, we knew this legislation was coming. The legislation basically asks for, um, a state mandate on the basic training for communications officers. Apparently we are one of many states that does not have a state, uh, requirement for training. So, um, we look at national standards and that's where we, uh, gather our training to train our communications officers along with the local knowledge, uh, that goes with our county. Um, so this legislation calls for a state mandate on minimum level of training and certification. As you know, law enforcement, uh, fire personnel and EMS have a certification process, uh, basic training that they must complete. Um, and we are the only ones in that first responder community that do not. Um, so. We knew this was coming. Um, one of the advocates for it is the Association for Public Safety and Telecommunications, APO. And to prepare for this, it's been in the works for several years now. Um, the training that we provide our communications officers has met those APO standards. So that, that way we knew, once it hopefully passes and we're in support of it, we're passing. Once we pass that, uh, we are, um, meeting those training standards. And we would just need to do just the bare minimum to catch up as opposed to having to send everybody to training. So we've planned for that. Um, the best part about.
There are the jurisdictions in Washington that aren't doing training that means the, I mean, not that it's my concern. I'm glad we are.
Yeah.
Wonder.
Well.
Be pushed back from some folks because of that.
Yeah, it's well, it, it. This is longer counties. Yeah. And, and so the training varies. I know that, um, our, our training will go for as much as six months until we let somebody off by themselves, right? But we do have, uh, almost everybody does a 40-hour standard. Um, also the state, um, the state 911 office provides that basic training, um, as well. So they have, uh, two classes right now, uh, that they're called telecom one, telecommunications one and telecommunications two. And they provide that training as part of the 911. Um, so if any agency does not have their training in-house, they can attend, um, those classes. We actually have, um, those classes hosted here, uh, at the end of March. We're going to be hosting the, the class to get our three communications officers to rhythm as well. So that we're just that much rounded. See what's going on, see what they're bringing from, from other.
So it just passes, you don't see much of a difference in our county's training because we're there, you're thinking.
Correct. We, we might need to make a little adjustments, a couple of adjustments, but it's definitely not a surprise or something completely new. Um, and budget wise, um, I don't see any, any big budget issue. Uh, because it is, um, most of that training is part of the 911 grant cover. Um, and where the state also provides some of the classes, they'll have to adjust theirs, um, and provide that training as well. So interestingly enough with this bill, um, usually the bills pass and then they try and figure out where the money is. The state has that money through the 911 system. We just need a bill that tells it what, you know, what training to do. Um, and the, the second part of it is that, um, on, on this bill, um, as the, the commissioners, um, in the past, this, this body, uh, recognized communications officers as first responders for our county. Um, passing this bill, the state would follow suit. Um, so it is, it would be a, a huge, um, it would have a huge meaning to our communications officers. To have that recognition.
And I'm like, what's that was?
I, I just thought you started the pencil over there. That you're indecisive. Yeah. Just like, yeah, go on record with, uh, the re commissioner, that myself, Bill and our partners for this. This bill becoming. Good thing, so staying. And, and everybody was aware of.
Yeah, and, um, and, and part of that standard that, um, you may, um, follow through or, or, or talk to other counterparts is, um, on the bill, it calls for a certification board. And so it does ask for representation from, uh, the law enforcement body, communications officers. City and county representatives to be on that board, um, that certification board that.
Union reps are low.
Union reps.
West side of the desk is. They're trying to make it very possible that that vision of gas gate mountains can initiate fast. Like you said, small east side counties should be represented.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, on, on, on that, it calls for many representatives for that body. And appointees by, by the different groups. Um, so other than that, I, I emailed that to you. So I mean, it's plenty of reading. It was read in, um, to the Senate, uh, on Monday and so far it's still alive. So it's a, it's a good sign. Uh, and we're hopeful that it'll, it'll pass.
Got any questions?
And then I'll turn it back to Jeff for the MCI.
Yeah, I'm still on hold. Um, the, so any questions on, I don't want to dispatch. Okay, thank you, Bill. Emergency manager program function, COVID-19, still there as we all know. Fortunately, the changing calendar, we can change anything related to that except for now being notified that, uh, certain medical providers in our county, specifically North Shore, uh, the last couple of days have, uh, founded, uh, N95 masks are again unavailable for commercial purchase. Got a request from them for N95 masks, which we hope to fill in coming days. That was put in at the ASAP. And we also made our final order on COVID-19 supplement grant at the end of the year. New shipment of N95 masks that we just received today before I came over here. That's wonderful timing. And at the same time, the state ULC and the Department of Health made an announcement last week that more protective masks were needed for use in public. Needing N95s, so the, the state ULC and Department of Health is now going to, well, they already have, uh, at least the, uh, N95 masks for public use and public distribution. That's what we get from them. We currently have, what we got from the past. Well, not only public in general, but also for schools. So we expect that we'll be getting more resources from the coming days from schools, other entities in the public and from, uh, private individuals to get those N95 masks. Trying to determine how to manage that disposition because, uh, the state is, that does do that. Unlike any other. Basically. We'll rock ship it directly to other entities that haven't been doing that. Done on the case for us, and they're definitely not gonna get them out. So.
That would be interesting for you, but.
Yeah.
What do you do, be one of the five per citizen who require, I mean, how do you?
And then what are you not?
You meet them at the gate of the, you know, it's.
We'll have a distribution pickup points, is what we will do.
During the vaccine.
Yep, you know, public health offices that we have or any other place they could go to pick them up, community centers, even school.
Just worried about the public stockpile of boxes.
All considered on our radar. Coordinator, you and I are trying to figure out what the latest announcement is. Because we have no forewarning of these things. Actually, I take that back, we had like two hours before like S E S. Hey, the governor's gonna make this announcement, D O H is gonna fill this out later today, but don't tell anybody. That's all he does. That was sometime last week, a little star, and I didn't even see it, so Friday. So, along with that announcement, the public distribution of N ninety-fives above and beyond health workers. It's also an announcement of providing expanded testing availability and mask user vaccination. We're all in that last announcement. Any questions about that? Okay, make sure I'm on track. So, yeah, county outdoor burn ban update. County two four update projects still on hold. Yenna system update is progressing. Frank is working on that on a daily basis and our new vendor sorry, our contract field vendor, there's overlap, they gave us two months. Vendor gives two months to charge overlap. Work them to get our system and all of its data transferred from the old to our new. That is moving forward very smoothly. Frank told me this morning that by the end of the week, we should have all that new data put into the new system. Excuse me, that whole data into the new system and then start updating. Because of the two county disclosures last week, there were lots of people wanting us to update their information, county employees as well as citizens, so let's get working on that. He virtually to get everybody up to date so they get notifications that they desire. And I'll skip over the grant programs, still talking about that emergency notification system for county employees. Continue to get those from department heads and the employees related to shooting, filling. Guys, don't. Like to go up. And to change over to the Yenna vendor, so that is also going smoothly to get everybody in this office, they get an hour and what address that office is. The located at, so we make those announcements. That's impressive, well. County emergency management program grants. C B list there, that list is not much changing in my draft, except for the U T S, like I stated, it's created on September thirty-first. My report. Stated to be the process. Other grants are listed. Weatherstorm updates. Tell you lots of stuff about that, I won't waste your time. Probably know what went on.
You lived somewhere.
Yes, everybody in the county lived it with their own experience.
Not quite in the ice, but.
Yeah. That makes us somebody. But if you have any questions about what happened, what actually taking you get some requests for assistance. People looking for somebody to shovel their roof off or collapse and so on and so forth. Put out public messages, of course, we don't have capacity to provide those services directly to them. You know, contractors or other nonprofits that might might help them with that. But at a certain point, though, last week, everybody was over there, couldn't find anybody, you know, flag a driveway or shovel their roof off your fire hall or professional man or, yeah, so, yeah, yeah, or your fire station. But we did put out those public messages on Tuesday on our social media, it said hazards, including subload on roofs. Take the appropriate actions, choose how to deal with the storms. And so on, Frank posted those on Tuesday afternoon. And we saw that rain on snow events starting, that's that's a big trigger. What we didn't see that was happening south was any significant flooding, even localized flooding, we got no reports of anything.
So far.
Outside of the usual, right? There's still a lot of snow, but it's melting slowly. Instead of that rapid rain on snow event that we thought we might have in the last week. I'm very happy that that didn't happen, I had a. So right now, there's those good events occurring in the county related to that. I'm sure there's people out there, I think it was Monday morning, I was reporting, they still have like thirty or so people without power in the county. But those are folks that are at the end of their transmission lines. Just takes that much longer to get to them. That's all on where, any questions?
I'm hearing that the cell tower in B Z that provides Verizon and A T and T is still down. Multiple people have put in like their service requests, but they're not getting, and they've been doing it for days and they haven't been getting any response. I didn't know if you might have a better contact number with those guys to try to bump that up the system.
Okay, so you're saying you gave the reports that all three carriers are down in the B Z area?
Yeah.
That's three completely different locations.
That's what I've been seeing all over Facebook, though. And I think it was two out of the three is what I've been seeing.
Okay. The site that you could see from B Z is the U S cellular site, so. Yeah, I will reach out to the technicians that I know or when I'm each of those companies. See what that status is.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the only one that I was made aware of, like I said, from the A T and T technician. I had an email exchange over the weekend about when they refueling up the flat top. He admitted that his generator was non-functional and they were out the entire time, that the public utility was out.
And I'm also hearing a lot of people or seeing a lot of people that are saying that CenturyLink isn't coming back online after the power outages.
Well, I, yeah, I believe that that is kind of similar to the natural gas outage we had. And like what P E D is going through now, there's people that are at the end of the line, right, all that. They get the main service going and they have to work their way down to continually get service.
Right.
And I also have a good friend that works in CenturyLink. See what he knows, find out too.
Okay.
No dispersions, but social media is, I'm good to be my friend in the past for us, for really accurate information. So I'll treat that with skepticism in my ear.
Yeah, I would say in the past, if ever.
There's, there's, there's valid stuff on there, no doubt, but we have to, you have to verify everything. Yep, I can check if those votes and if there is some serious issues. And I would say that, you know, if you're contacted and what we'll do also, like you already mentioned. Your strategy is that they need to contact their service provider and continue to contact them, just to say that through that list of restorations. Now, they need, they need to, they can believe that they fixed the problem for everybody. And if you don't complain again, you know, there'll be later, they don't know you're still without service. That's better, if people approach me.
That was the only question I had.
Thank you.
I have one thing that's missing from here.
Oh.
I know, right? Uh, and you look back here, your sheriff's officer to rescue volunteer appreciation ceremony.
That is not under my capacity as director of emergency.
Oh, that's true, but I thought there would be an invite on here.
There was an email invite sent out.
I was just gonna mention that I will be there tonight.
Wonderful. Look forward to seeing, that's my other.
I see other guy who can publish one.
Yep, working with sheriff's office. Yes, we'll show our appreciation as a county and as sheriff's office to search for residents of all schools. Hi.
How many people normally attend that?
Only. Last year was all virtual. Currently, I believe we have sixty-three star volunteers, and typically we'll get anywhere from one to thirty members of families, given COVID and recent cases. I don't know, I hope that's wrong on that. If I found a venue that is willing to host us, so we're gonna do our best to hold that in person, if that is your, all of those rules. But, yeah.
Commissioner Christopher, would you please give everyone there tonight my thanks as well? You guys don't want what I have, so I won't be making it.
No, I fully plan to fill you guys in on what I was doing. And get your permission to take you in on my statements of appreciation to all of us.
Thank you.
No. Everybody's a good.
Thanks, gentlemen, if that's all, nothing else.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Do I see Lynn and Lynn Ward here? Do we have anybody else? Is there's people in there that need to talk to us, department heads, elects?
Prosecutors in here. Lives in here.
They're both on the agenda today.
Either one of them are buried, so I don't want to.
Go back to the blue card. All right, two thirty, building department director Lynn Ward for new business. Come on forward.
Make your case.
Uh, yes, come make my case. This sheet is just some numbers last week. About roughly back to two thousand and six range, so I just did some quick numbers. It's not valuations at all. It's just permit numbers. I did, I united to Commissioner Anderson, so it's not here.
It's hard to read because it's sideways.
Oh.
Which is why my head's always tilted sideways.
Yeah, yes, Cindy puts the other one together. I did this one. I'll tell her he can like her picture.
I just have to front.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I just kind of.
Yeah, exactly.
Since the question, yeah, since the question you asked, God, I did at least some, you know, quick numbers of of permits. Kind of back to two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight compared to nineteen twenty.
But actually, speaking of that, seems like we have consensus getting out, sitting to print it this way, this way, wouldn't it be, you know?
I can ask if it will.
We're not writing it.
Okay, I'll ask her if she can do that.
I have asked her what it, she has PDF editor, so I.
Okay. Well, we'll rotate that.
Because on my email, I don't have access.
Yeah, to rotate it, that makes sense, so. All right, we put me as an add-on to ask your blessings. Jeff helped put together some information on leasing a larger large format scanner. Currently, there's only one within the county and Public Works is using it, everybody watches what anyone else needs to use it because they're not staying focused as or having no large volume of records. So I asked Jeff to do some research. It's an add-on to the current lease. And when I asked Jeff if we needed to go to the P A's office and they said they weren't planning on running it by the P A's, with an additional lease to a current contract that is already in place. There is no lease contacting when you're agreed upon, just an items editor, so hopefully that gives you that part. But basically, what I am here to ask is if you would approve the league department putting it under their budget to lease another large format scanner. We still have hundreds and hundreds of large rolls to copy or to scan, so that we can archive them. And then like this funny one to fulfill a public records request, a large one, because it's a commercial project. Amelia was over there for an hour scanning this one large set. We have multiples of those, so I mean, there's a lot of volumes still left to scan in order to thin our records and reduce the hole that we have.
Are we charging for said public records?
Not when they're digitally set. This won't copy, this will only scan saved, so that we can save it into our.
Usually, I've been setting.
Correct, correct, when what we've been doing with the files is save it into the shared drive and then when we're saving it to smart cup, so it's saved into the patients. So if someone calls with a question, Megan can answer them, Cindy can fulfill public records requests ultimately. Eventually, that'll be faster, but now we have to go into the paper copies and go search you. But what I would like permission to do is enter into a three-year lease with Pannon, who's already providing all of our other copiers and scanners in the county. And it would be a hundred and ninety-five dollars a month. Um, but it would benefit the county, I think, greatly in helping to get that scanning done of records that go way back. And if the one in Public Works was ever out of commission or something like that, or it was out of time, ours would be available to other departments as well. I wouldn't just have a key-only for building department use. But I know Public Works, you know, has been in the same boat as us.
Commissioner Tristan Soder.
There's the camera. Would you anticipate at the end of the three years, well, the backlog, because a lot of what you you scan is not, it's, it's the backlog of stuff.
It's the backlog.
So could we anticipate at the end of the three years, we don't need it anymore, that we can go back to having one?
If we have enough done, yes, I would just like the option.
Could we have enough done over there?
I don't know.
Aspirational goals.
My goal is, yes, my my goal is, in any free time we have, that we'll be working on it.
Because I'm always, I'm always careful about adding technology that becomes now the new baseline. It's like sure that's how we started with one desktop.
Right, right. I would very much like it to be done by the three-year mark. Um, if if we're halfway done, I mean, I would give you a good gauge of three years from now to say, we made, you know, X amount of progress. And then we are A, we don't need police anymore, or B, and I extend. But in the meantime, you know, to make where we have in our rebuilding, it would just help a lot in reducing that backlog. Because there's plenty of backlog, we still have a few things over in our building that haven't been brought over, because where are we going to put them? I mean, you just have a lot of stuff.
Commissioner Christopher.
For me, it it comes down to two things you gotta go on for you. One of them is technology to get us out of the stomach. And two, is your budget is pretty self-sufficient. It's not tax dollars funding it. So I, I didn't.
How many hours do you think is in, is there? Because to me, this is part of the archiving project that we've been doing for a while.
I, I can't even think in the term of hours. I can't, more in the months category.
Have you seen the number of cases and boxes that are up there?
I've been working on it for probably two years and hopefully now can do, you know, more time even than not packing boxes to move and that sort of thing. But hours, I mean, hours and hours. I worked on it many hours already and many more to go.
Will you need a supplemental for this or was it possible?
I do not anticipate needing a supplemental.
Have, have you talked to planning? Do they need a scanner like this as well? And you could split it between the two departments?
I talked briefly to Mochi. She said they don't have a break for it because a lot of theirs got done already. They had an intern for a longer period than we did. So a lot of their larger ones, but they still do have some larger ones that they do need to scan. And it would also be available to them to do so. And cost-wise, I would project that we would use it the majority of the time. So I wouldn't. Anticipate, you know, asking another department to. Would, for the bill simply because I think I'm going to be the last majority of the usage.
Commissioner Sutter.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it as far as I would, my aspiration would be to try to. Get, get the backlog worked through.
I would love.
And then, you know, take a look at it, see maybe there's, because it's not a huge amount of money, as Commissioner Christopher said. Department is mostly is speed-driven. This is, you know, it's appropriate. These are, these, you know, the reason you have all of these, they're. Sets of plans and stuff that people have submitted. They're bulky. I know when you're done, do we allow the, can I come rent it as a member of the public to do that? I was moving some stuff last night. Like, why am I keeping these? Because I may want them sometime.
You may want them.
Schools of plants and things like that.
But this means at least in our system so that it's going to be accessible to people. And then once we get that backlog bottomed, then as things are planned for and a certificate of occupancy is issued. Then we can go scan that set and it's not like this one and then all of it.
Commissioner Christopher.
My head was on. When we put out our COVID money requests for expenses. I remember I knew you had desktop printer type stuff on there. Do you have a scanner on there?
I did ask for a large-scale scanner.
Back at that.
I did, yes.
We granted.
Yeah, but not knowing where, you know. Yet not knowing the status of that, but needing to, you know, keep working on it because we only have so much room available.
Say yes.
Do we want to put this on the consent agenda for next week? Or would one of you like to make a motion?
I'm fine with making the motion. Assuming you'd like to get it. Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to authorize the lease of an IQ ball pro X forty-four hundred scanner. From Canada, the monthly cost of a hundred and ninety-five dollars for a thirty-six, thirty-six month period. For the building.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, although signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much, Lynn.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for us?
No, that's it for now.
Okay. I hate to give you more work, but on the, on your permits. Back in two thousand and six, seven, eight. It didn't say how many single-family homes were there on that list.
No, I did it by the types of permits, but I didn't pick out single-family. Would you like that for the broken out?
I, I'd love that if, if you have a couple of minutes and it's still easily accessible.
Do you want it for all of the years that I showed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And do I need to do anything?
No, you, okay, no, there's a document for them to. I guess.
All righty. Thank you much.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on, consent agenda.
Mister Chairman, to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with seven items.
I second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with seven items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, payments.
Mister Chairman, make a motion that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars, sixty-two cents. The payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date ending January eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, elected officials report. Prosecuting attorney David Canal.
Just executive. He just says executive, Mister Chairman.
Okay, since it is executive. Is there any other business that you gentlemen have that we would need to discuss after executive?
Nothing they can't wait.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to shut down the Zoom and go into executive session for how long? Prosecutor Canal.
Five minutes.
Five minutes to start with.
Always. I can change it to ten.
All right, ten minutes to start with. And when we come back, all we're going to do is adjourn the meeting. So thank you all for logging in, visiting us on this very fine Tuesday. Please come again next week. And there will be no meeting, no workshop on Thursday, so we will be meeting next Tuesday morning. Thank you and have a great day. Would you like to give me a just call myself?
Yes, he's going to call yourself.
All right, thank you.
It's announced that you're going into executive session via the R C W.
Yes, we're going into executive session via the R C W. Where is that at? It's not in my.
It's on your blue card.
Is it? Executive session with accordance of R C W forty-two thirty dot one, one, zero, comma, one, dash, I. The issue of a general nature, nature will be discussed in open session.